Good morning, everyone. This is the meeting for the nineteenth of March, two thousand twenty-four. And the first thing on the agenda is the salute to the flag. And I would be very happy if we could have Mr. Parks salute the flag with us.
Veterans present, hold. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now, Madam Clerk, will we have the roll call, please?
Of course. Alexis Hill is absent this morning. Vice Chair Herman?
Here.
Mike Clark?
Present.
Marius Garcia?
Here.
Clara Andreola?
Present.
County Manager Eric Brown?
Here.
Assistant D.A. Edwards?
Here.
And I'm Jan Galasini, your county clerk. Madam, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. And we have no invocation today, as I understand. The next item on the agenda is public comment. And I'll let the clerk take it away.
Manager Brown, would you like to introduce it?
Public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. Commission will also hear public comment during individual action items, with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments that are made to the commission as a whole. Virtual public comment eligible when facilities are available.
We do have several people signed in, so if you would queue up if you're the second name called. First up, we have Jennifer Kent, followed by Pam Dar. Jennifer Kent. Pam Dar, followed by Bonnie Billings. I do have documents to disperse to the board from Ms. Dar.
Good morning, commissioners. I have these. I want to put them on the record. I'm very concerned. There's good organizations that are working on this lands bill that are following the thirty by thirty. It's being rushed pretty quick, and there's a lot of questions that the constituents haven't had answered. And certain things haven't been locked to where our land's not taken from us. When I heard the Rockefeller Foundation wanted to control these lands, and it's not to benefit us, they want to be able to put it on the stock market and sell it internationally. Well, that did get stopped by the S E C. But now they're looking at a different way of going about it. It's called the ecosystem accounting. That is their next move. It's never going to stop unless it's brought back here locally, so we have a say and protect what is ours. We have a right to this land. We have a right to the growth. We have the right to the minerals. This is our country, our land, and I love it here. I ask you, I plead with you. Bring it back. Make sure we have the control levers in place, so we have a say on how it's taken care of and not Wall Street, not other countries. We have that say. Thank you, and have a great day.
Bonnie Billings, followed by Terry Brooks.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm Bonnie Billings, and I applied for the Library Board of Trustees. And I read through most of those applications, eighty-three of them. And there are many qualified people, and you're going to have a hard job choosing one. But I thought, gosh, what could I do to stand out amongst eighty-three applicants? Well, I could wear red. Oh, and I could also be here to advocate for myself. So I'm just as qualified. As a director for a K-312 school, I wrote policies, I did evaluations, I even wrote the criteria for evaluations. I did goals and objectives. My charge as a director was to oversee all of the libraries in the districts, manage their budget. I also oversaw technology, so I rolled out the one-to-one devices for all students, K through twelve. And I was in charge of what curriculum got chosen. So you can imagine that through all of those jobs, it required a strong facilitative leader to get through the competing interests. And so that's one way that I can stand out, is I'm very good at helping people understand each other, what they're saying, the competing interests. But the other thing that I can say that I stand out for is I'm a huge advocate for libraries. The U.S. Constitution doesn't really spell out that libraries are the hub to exercise those freedoms in that Constitution. But in action, they are. And they do that by providing a wide range of knowledge, expertise, training, for all citizens of the United States. And that levels the education for all. They all have access to it. And I hope that libraries will continue to uphold those principles of the United States Constitution. So that's what I stand out for. I hope that you choose the lady in red. Thank you.
Terry Brooks, followed by Tracy Hilton-Thomas.
Good morning. It's me, Terry Brooks, again. And today, I'd like to address the process of adaptation and its part in homelessness. After all the other things that I've addressed, this might sound a bit strange, but I'm really slow when it comes to adapting to any kind of change. The coronavirus came to us at the same time as our changing to daylight savings time. And trying to adapt to both of them at once, for me, took a long, long time. Imagine losing your job, a job you really enjoyed, and then having to adapt to being unemployed. Imagine losing your home that you had lived in for years. Trying to adapt to being homeless could involve a lot of tears. Imagine being hungry, having no food and no table. Trying to adapt to that, I would not be able. Imagine being in poor health and just barely staying alive and trying to adapt to a struggle to survive. Imagine being mentally ill and living in distress and not being able to adapt to such stress. Imagine being a child and not going to school, not learning with other kids and feeling like a fool. Sometimes it's really hard to find a way of adaptation to any kind of changes in such a situation. I've wondered what it would be like to be homeless and to walk a mile in their shoes. I've learned that some of them aren't able to walk a mile. I've learned that some of them don't have any shoes. This coronavirus became quite a rival, but it has inspired some people to learn methods of survival. I'd like to thank the Reno ambassadors for the job that they do. I've seen them helping homeless people and trying to advise them, too. I'd like to thank the county commissioner, who informed me that last week's meeting was canceled. Otherwise, it would have taken me a while to adapt to it being canceled. And I'd like to thank you all for listening to me today, and I look forward to seeing you again when I have a lot more to say. Thank you.
Tracy Hilton-Thomas, followed by Elise Weatherly.
He's always that hard act to follow. One Peter, two fifteen teaches. Says, "For it is the will of God that by doing good you may silence the ignorance of foolish people." There are many in these chambers today that are trying to silence the ignorance within this agenda. In item seventeen, you have wasted staff's time on rules of procedure that you have no intention on following. You certainly have not observed the current rules in place. Why on earth do you think anyone would trust you to observe them now? In Article five, the only change needed is to move the sentence, "If the majority agree..." dot, 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 to the end of the paragraph. The proposed version is nothing more than another power grab for a chair that is already crazed with tyranny. This is a board of five, not one. Eighty percent of the community is being disenfranchised with this proposed version. Why are the internal commission evaluations being removed? Is this just another way to deflect from the corruption within? Did you pay attention to the part under Article nine where you serve the needs of the interests of the citizens of Washoe County? And are you dedicated to showing respect and civility? Is that what the chair was doing when she removed public comments from the agenda and gavelled down dozens of citizens? Demonstrating open, honest, and respectful communications. She has certainly failed in that with the Commissioner Herman. She lied about the resolution and her refusal to put it on the agenda. It does not violate any laws and only enhances the county's ability to carry out its operations according to the statutes cited within it. Your code of conduct is so overly subjective, it is a joke. It is unrealistic and absent of a reasonable person. As long as you continue to treat employees like garbage, you will never have a positive work environment. And when employees refuse to use deodorant or have other body odors, you might find it surprising that other employees don't want to work with them. I've watched a few of the Truckee Meadow Fire Protection District meetings, and the chair might want to remember which office she filed for. This is Washoe County, not City of Reno. She is required to act in the best interest of the county, not Reno. I am respectfully informing her that she is just as much of a tyrant in those meetings as she is in this one. To be clear, I do not say this to offend. I say it out of truth. Anyone telling her that she is not a bully is lying to her. Are you sure you want for the challenge of abiding to this part of the code of conduct? What sort of disciplinary action is there against you, elected officials? Exactly. It's all a waste of paper and time. Thank you.
Elise Weatherly, followed by Mark Newman.
Good morning. Elise Weatherly, Washoe County resident. What I will say is I'm going to read a little bit to you, and then I'm going to talk to you about ASCPA or ASCAP. Agree to disagree, it might work well in politics, religion, and even doctors and lawyers and Indian chiefs, but it does not work well in the world of I T. For example, if God is for us, who can be against us? That is a programming statement. If, then, else. I am not the programmer, I am the data. And I kind of like the Star Trek data, you know? That's who I can sort of relate to. So what do I say to the lying lawyers? Do I confirm their self-aggrandizement? Do I put up with liars and sneakers and hiders? Or do I demand them that this... Remember, this life is temporary. What then? Is it just going to disappear? Or will we stand in front of God and give an account for our lives? We're going to stand before God and give an account for our lives. How do I know that I can trust that? Well, eight and a half years ago, I was given four months to live. I heard a voice, whose voice was it, say, "I'll sustain you." I was sustained, obviously. And agree to disagree does not work in I T, accounting, payroll, or even music. Let's imagine for a second that I'm in a band, which I was. Let's say that we're going to do a song in the key of C, which we did occasionally. Let's say that I'm going to go, well, I'm not going to get... I'll get close enough. I'll go up to C sharp and then lower it just a little bit. You know what that would do to you, the audience? It would hurt your ears. So all I will say is that we have to pay attention to what's going on. Do I do good because I'm a good doer? No. It's because I know I will be held into account even for that. And because God scares me, he really does, I'm going to do what he says to do, what's right. Now, back to ASCPA versus ASCAP. I have this... I watch free TV anymore because I don't make a whole lot of money, and I haven't for the last eight and a half years, because I had to resign from my position as Director of Payroll from the Eldorado because the chemo is making me fuzzy. I could stare at the Excel spreadsheet, but I couldn't figure it out. So I watched free TV, and I heard these advertisements. What would you do if... Well, if you found a dog that was like being abused or abandoned, right? I'd call Washoe County Animal Control, because they do their job, and they do it well, and I don't have to pay for it. The guilt does not work that great. All right? What about lying lawyers? We have a contest here in the Reno Sparks area. Couple of guys think that all lawyers lie, and I don't. I think there's got to be at least one of them, not a district attorney, because they don't lie, that's telling the truth. So what did I do? I wrote a song called "Lying Lawyers," and it has to do with a lawyer that we paid for to lie to us about the fact that we just have to trust this Leach Law Firm. We don't have to follow the state of Nevada law. Bad idea.
Mark Newman, followed by Bruce Parks.
Good morning, commissioners and staff. For the record, Mark Newman. Today, you're going to be voting on items ten through fourteen. I'm sure they'll pass. Hopefully, you can put some kind of a clause in there to keep the contractors as local contractors instead of out-of-state, where somebody comes in from out-of-state with their labor, does the stuff, and leaves with the money. Our taxpayers paid for these projects. I think it should be done by people that own and operate businesses here in Washoe County, and that their labor here is people that live in Washoe County, not from some other state. That's that one. The second one is about two weeks ago, I went down to the Midden and Gardner Ville Senior Center and Recreation Building and went for a tour. And what I saw in there when I left after the tour brought tears to my eyes about what Washoe County does with our seniors here. I advise all of you to go down there and see it. It would make you sad of what... how we treat our seniors here. Thank you.
Bruce Parks, followed by Gordon Gossage.
Bruce Parks, for the record, Washoe County taxpayer. I see on the agenda that we're going to be appointing a new library trustee today. I'd like to point out, there is a decided lack of diversity in the appointments to Washoe County boards and committees. It is predominantly leaning left, shall we say? There are extremely few conservatives appointed to any of our boards and committees. It's a rarity when one does. Case in point, well, let's take a look at the makeup of the Washoe County library system. Hundred and thirty-three employees. How many are conservatives? Take a guess. Well, you're wrong. There's only nineteen out of a hundred and thirty-three. Now, there's this big buzzword, D E I. I call it D I E because that's what I wish it would do. Where's the diversity? Where's the inclusivity? Where's the equity? There is none. When you consider an appointment to this library board and for all future appointments, please consider diversity of voices, diversity of opinions, diversity of outlook. It'll make the county better. I promise you. If the only thing you're hearing is one side of the coin, you're missing half of the information. Please, as commissioners, fix this. You're also going to be talking about your handbook. Some of the changes, I think, are timely, necessary. But when I look at Article five that you're considering, I submit to you, folks, that the previous language and the proposed language are a soup sandwich. It's ridiculous. How can you, as a county commissioner, represent your district when there's all these stumbling blocks in your way to get an item on the agenda? There are things that are unique to District Three that they don't experience in District Five. But you can't get that on the agenda unless you go through this arduous process. That's ridiculous. Every one of you should be able to get an item on the agenda simply by stating here at this meeting, "I would like to see the following as an agenda item." Thank you very much. And the next meeting, there it is. That's how it should be. Thank you.
Gordon Gossage, followed by Janet Butcher.
Good morning. For the record, Gordon Gossage with Regenesis Reno. I also am applying for the Library Board Trustee position. And I'd like to announce today, we have a wonderful program. My downtown Rotary Group has just awarded five thousand dollars, and it's all about people giving oral histories of Western heritage. So these oral histories will be available at the library, and they'll be available to our students. And it's something that, as someone who just got here seven years ago from a very liberal eastern area of the country, I cherish the Western heritage we have here in Washoe County. And we have so many diverse neighbors. Some people will ask me, well, how do you talk to Bruce Parks? And I say, well, he's my neighbor. He served our country, and without people like Bruce, I'd be speaking Russians, Russian or Chinese. So we need people with that diversity. And think of when some of you were growing up, okay? You knew what living out West was. You did, you know? I don't. And so what will happen with this series of oral histories is that you can say, what does it mean to you? What does Western heritage mean to you? And this is not about, you know, library issues of what books, you know, the little kids read, about transgender stuff. This is something much more positive, you know? There's a lot in Western heritage that people like me need to know. There are a lot of principles that we might not agree with, that we need to understand, you know? And just because you are not comfortable with guns, like I'm not, I've never fired a gun in my life, I want to learn about that, you know? I mean, I have friends who have fourteen guns at home. And I say, wow, why is that? And it's, well, they collect them, they go target shooting, they go hunting, you know? It's... People who come from the outside like me often do not understand where we now live. We just don't, you know? And so with the Western heritage oral histories, we'll be able to learn more about our neighbors who grew up here, third, fourth generation Nevadans, and then people who are from another part of the country, another type of set of values. They will have their turn also, you know? So we'll learn, what does it mean to be transgender? And it's symmetric. We need to look at, we have two communities. We have these people coming in like me from California and Boston, and then we have people who've lived here for generations. Let's think about unity.
Janet Butcher, followed by Sandy Tibbet. And Ms. Butcher does have documents to distribute.
Janet Butcher, for the record. Please enter my comments, verbatim, into the minutes. It's so nice to see Commissioner Herman at the chair position. I don't understand last week why the meeting was canceled. You had a forum, a quorum, I mean. And this week... But anyway, it's so nice to see her in the position. I've handed out some analysis. I'm all about data. And I broke things down into the different districts. District one had twenty-eight applicants. District two had nineteen applicants. District three had fourteen. District four had sixteen. And District five had twelve. Out of all eighty-nine, and I counted eighty-nine, summary by years, six had under... or six years and under had twenty-one applicants. I think those should not be considered. There will be a time for them. Seven and ten years, mm. Eleven to twenty years, twenty-one to thirty-five years, and thirty-six and over made up a lot more. Especially the twenty-one to way over really should be considered because they have an investment in this community. Anyway, and then also, too, it's broken down into the different partisan positions, even though they are non... it is a nonpartisan race or application. In September of 2018, there were only five applicants for the library trustee. This speaks to the contention that has come about under the leadership, or should I say personal agenda, of the library director. Analysis points out that there seems to be a very heavy bias of not only selecting liberal-thinking people to the board, but the districts are not equally or equitably being represented. District four and five appear to be overlooked on a consistent basis. With so many applicants, applications, applicants, oh, I already said that, six years or less should not be considered. There are some really good... I mean, there's a lot of applicants, and there was a lot of things to go through. One of the things that I didn't write down as I came upon about the third one, that when they asked the question, "How many years did you live in Washoe?", they stated, "I came here in twenty-something or rather." They didn't answer the question quite correctly. Anyway, I just wanted to point that out. Thank you. You've got a tough job ahead of you, and I wish you had a special meeting.
Sandy Tibbet, followed by Sean Hill.
Sandy Tibbet, for the record. Good morning, commissioners. I hope you all are doing very well. First day of spring. Yeah. So I come here for the library board appointment. I can't stress enough the importance of appointing the correct person to this open seat, and I implore this board to take careful consideration when casting your vote to fill it. You don't want to have to do this again in like three months because you appointed the wrong person, do you? All the current trustees on the board are amazing, all of them. All of them. Anne Silver was a blessing. Deanna Jax was a blessing. Leah Moser, she's grown into her position since we got rid of the old chair, Amy Galeri. She's found her voice, which is awesome. Even Al Rogers is good. She's fiscally responsible. So they're amazing. So they have demonstrated their ability to adapt to adversity. They communicate effectively as a board, and they work as a team to successfully conduct the business of the library, which has not been easy these last few months. The new trustees should complement the existing board by being neutral and approaching decisions logically, an individual who sincerely values our community and actively listens to the concerns of the community members. Our community and library board, they merit an individual who is responsible and is devoid of any woke ideologies. That would be you. It doesn't matter what side of the aisle they are on, as long as they don't have a personal or political agenda, and they operate with integrity. Somebody with family values and is fiscally responsible, somebody who cultivates truth, honesty, and sincerity. Certain applicants within our community have openly shared their intentions during public comment at board meetings, or in a written format, and some of them have done both. These are deliberate acts that contribute to the hostility within our community, and it needs to end in order for our community to heal and unite. I ask this board to appoint an individual based on their qualifications and abilities rather than any particular agenda. A person who is dedicated and who can commit the necessary time to ensure success of our library board. Please. Thank you. Have a blessed day.
Sean Hill, followed by Penny Brock.
Good morning. Sean Hill, for the record. I have the honor and privilege to lead one of our community's great not-for-profit organizations, Sierra Nevada Journeys. And I've applied for the open position on the Washoe County Open Space and Regional Parks Commission. So I'm going to give you a little bit of background about me and about the organization that I work for, because I think it's relative to this role, or relevant to this role. Sierra Nevada Journey started in the back of the old Rocksport Climbing Gym off Adie and Silverada in 2006. Our origin story is that our founder was with a group of Reno students near Tahoe, and one of them asked if sharks are in that ocean. I have been with the organization since 2009 and built my career around our vision, which is to transform lives by building curiosity, confidence, and connections to nature, especially for students who are traditionally underserved. I am a father of two boys. I take my kids to local regional parks for hiking trips. I take my kids camping. They have that opportunity. They have that, the ability for those experiences. Last year, we ran a pilot program in District Three where we brought, at Sierra Nevada Journeys, where I work, we brought students from that district to the Sun Valley Regional Park, hundreds of students. Eighty-five percent of those students had never visited the park before. Sixty-nine percent of those students had never been on a hike before. When we asked them after the trip, after the experience, if they'd like to return to Sun Valley, eighty-five percent of those students said they indeed would. So I've committed my career to building access and equity to the outdoors. I'm finishing up my participation in the Washoe County Leadership Academy, where I have received a wonderful education in public service. I'm a collaborative leader, respected... I'm a collaborative leader, respected by my peers and colleagues, and I'm willing and able to volunteer and give my time to the Open Space and Regional Parks Commission. I think I would lend valuable experience and perspective to this important group. Thank you for your time.
Penny Brock followed by Valerie Fianaca.
Penny Brock for the record. I'm extremely distressed that in the last three months, one of the commission meetings has been canceled every month. The county commissioners were elected to be at these meetings, to have a meeting to conduct the business of the county and we, the people. The chairman should not be allowed to cancel the meetings. As long as there's a quorum of three, the meeting should be held. The other commissioners should stand up to such a bully. You were represented, elected to represent us, the people, not the chairman. The other thing that's distressing is that she has continued to deny the agenda item for paper ballots and hand counting to be on the agenda for a hearing. This could be considered perhaps election interference and obstruction. I would ask the county commissioners, the other four of you, to again stand up to her and let us have our hearing on paper ballots and hand counting. Two hundred and fifty counties have already decided they are going to vote by paper ballots and hand counting this year, and it's growing. There is a case that just went before the Supreme Court. We're waiting for a docket number. It's Arizona, Cary Lake versus Dominion Voting Machines. There's all kinds of new evidence coming forward that the Dominion Voting Machines are corrupt. That puts into question our elections, since we've had Dominion Voting Machines since 2017. Elko County tomorrow, their county commissioners will have their second meeting on paper ballots and hand counting. It is also distressing that, well, first of all, I want to thank the staff that finally, I had requested through Washto 311, the letter that Eric Brown sent to the Secretary of State and the response, which became known as the Undated Letter. At the last meeting, the chair said that based on that letter, that she could not put it on the agenda. Also, the DA's opinion and the staff report was very favorable to paper ballots and hand counting. So when I got the Undated Letter, it was not sent by Wilsham, the head of elections. It was sent by a staffer named Gabriel Whatever. He has no qualifications to have written this letter. He said, there's inaccuracies in Jeanne Herman's resolutions, but he didn't think we were smart enough to understand the inaccurate.
Valerie Fianaca followed by Nicholas St. John.
Valerie Fianaca for the record. I'm going to show you some examples, or an example, of how conservatives are very much in disdain with our library board. This is an email thread from one of our librarians, Jana McMillan and Jeff Scott. And I'm just going to read it to you. And you all know that if you want all 3,400 of them, you can get them from me. I'll bring them to you on a thumb drive. If you want to see Soul Suck, that's Soul Suck. It'll take you weeks to go through them. We'll start with the first one from Jana to Jeff. Look what Bruce Parks and one of his minions brought me, but they sure are pretty. His response, you sure it isn't poisonous? This from Fianaca? She responds, well, I had them at home all weekend and nobody died or was sick, so I'm going to guess they were all right. Not sure which quote lady friend unquote tagged along to drop them off. His response, so who dropped them off? Bruce? Yes, and a quote lady friend according to staff. Next response, he also came in last Wednesday for his quote concerned citizens quote meeting. They meet here under a couple of names and leaders. This is newish, and was raving about my staff. Bruce was raving about the staff, Aurora in particular, and how helpful and knowledgeable everyone was. I just agreed with him and told him our staff is the best. Aurora asked not to have his comments about her put on the annual PA. Ha, Jeff says, fun, always plotting, I suppose. This is what is prevalent in almost every single one of these emails. Not as, not only is this kind of commenting amongst employees going on, but an inordinate amount of time is spent on this kind of nonsense. Nonsense that costs us, the taxpayers, an inordinate amount of money, I would surmise. I only chose a few key words to pull in my FOIA. I can only imagine what would have happened had I chosen a few more words. As you all can see, it's not really pretty, but I'm going to keep on sharing it with you because I don't think you'd see it otherwise. And it's really horrifying what they think of conservatives, which by the way, comprise 68% of our county if you count nonpartisans and libertarians and Republicans. That's 68% of our county, and that's how they feel about us at the library.
Nicholas St. John.
Nicholas St. John for the record. I have a lot to get through, so I'll try to do this quickly. One of the things that we keep coming here for, and one of the things that's aggravating is that we don't get to talk to our county commissioners on a regular basis. We have submitted requests and demands here at the chambers a number of times, only to fall on deaf ears. So hereby, I demand that town hall meetings by each commissioner at least once a month be put into their rules and procedures. I demand that vaccine passports be put on the agenda for a resolution to ban them. I demand the removal of the metal detector out front, which is unconstitutional, and we have plenty of documentation to show that there are no policies, procedures, statutes, ordinances that can override the Fourth Amendment. I also demand that you put on the agenda to have the elections, citizens' activity or advisory board put on the agenda to discuss. It was so imperative that we do this, clear back in, I don't know, August or July or September last year, and here we are, March, rushing into a general election year, and we still have not had a citizens' election activity or advisory board put on the agenda even to discuss. That's ridiculous. One of the things that we've looked at is oaths and official bonds of officers when term of office begins. One, members of the legislature and all officers, which is what you guys are. Executive, judicial, and ministerial shall before entering upon the duties of their respective offices provide the official bond required by law. When such bond shall be required, and by the way, when is not if. When is 10 days if you're elected, 30 days if you're appointed. When such bond shall be required and take the subscribe, take and subscribe to the official oath. All officers appointed to fill vacancies in the case provided by law shall qualify and give bond when required, when 30 days from the time of their appointment. Ms. Andreola. 282-200. Forfeiture of office or appointment upon failure to file new or additional bond, suspension of functions of the, of office. If any officer or person fails within 10 days of the date of the personal service or within 30 days of the date of the first insertion or publication of posted service to file a new and additional bond or undertaking the office or appointment of the person or officer so failing shall become vacant, and such officer or person shall forfeit such appointment or office or appointment. So we hereby demand that Clara Andreola resign immediately because she does not have a bond. Thank you.
Betty Theeson.
Betty Theeson for the record. How refreshing to see Jean up there as vice chair finally, conducting the meeting. I'm just, I live in the Rancho Haven area, and there was a burglary out there a couple of weeks ago. Three people, two men and a woman, were caught red-handed carrying things out of a man's house that is in the hospital. No one was home, so evidently they could tell that no one had been there because of the snow. They caught them red-handed because one of the neighbors was diligent and called real quick, and sheriffs got out there and got them. They were put in jail. Now several neighbors have called the DA's office, and according to the DA's office, which you might know about, those charges have all been dropped against those people. And I would like to know why. My husband and I are elderly. We live by ourselves. I do have a gate, so I'm locking the gate every day now. It's scary to know that these people are out again. Two of them were released, one still being held on other charges, but those charges for that burglary were dropped, according to the DA's office. Thank you.
There's nobody else in chambers signed in, but I do have emails to place on the record.
Excuse me, I signed in for public comment.
Did you sign in for item four or for a different item?
Agenda item nine.
Okay, that will come up later in the meeting.
Thank you.
So the way our meeting runs is now it's time to take a break until 11 o'clock. Thank you. Okay. I like wood.
Security needs to take that down. Okay, I will call this Board of County Commissioners meeting back to order, and we'll go into item five, Mr. Manager.
Item five is commissioners and county managers announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commissions, updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I'm looking to you first. Do you have any announcements for us today?
I think we should, we have not announced that there's an agenda adjustment. We're going to pull item 17.
Yes, thank you for that. And that'll come back probably in April?
That will come back in April.
Okay.
Try to get that back on in April, yes, thank you.
Wonderful.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other commissioners have announcements? Yes, Vice Chair Herman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a number of items that I'd like to discuss. I'd like to have, I'm going to request that we have an agenda item placed on our agenda regarding the roads in, in the northern part of our county, the dirt roads that need attention since they haven't been really worked on it since the 2010s. So 2009 was about the last time. So I just wanted to have the agenda read, item read that the money that we get from Pilt, because we know that amount, will go towards these neglected roads and, and become the, the amount of money that is available for repairing these roads and keeping them in good condition. Another item I'd like to see on the agenda would be regarding the cabs. Again, once again, I'm going to remind everybody, and also request this agenda item that developments need to be heard at cab meetings. I've had it requested by many, many, many board members and people that attended the meetings. I think we need to listen to the people, especially in election year. So that's my second agenda item. And that shouldn't take long to do, so, because the other way is not working very well. And then I wanted to remind us that it should be about time to revisit our waste management contract, because there are a lot of problems out there still, even though this winter was not quite as bad as some winters, but we need to revisit that. And we need to keep an eye on what's going on with the storm in Lemon Valley, so keep a close eye on that. So I just wanted to bring something forward that I just have heard things from people, and it kind of bothers me that, that our, our board members sometimes seem to be maybe spending a little bit more time and effort on helping Reno rather than helping the people of Washto County, which is, you know, what we're supposed to be taking care of, District one through five. So I just wanted to remind board members that we have a job to do, and, and that's represent the people. So just a reminder. And let's see here. I will save that one for a little bit later. And then I've been really studying the rules and procedures, so we're going to be ready for some action here when the date comes, when you just mentioned that date. So, so thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, Vice Chair Herman. Any other comments by commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Clark?
Bring this up again, it's an announcement. I think that it's, I think it's disingenuous to have someone running for office and actually being the chair of the meeting. I think this is a situation, today is a good example, you know? Last week, we had, we had four commissioners available. We should have had a meeting last week. This week, we've got, the co-chair started the meeting, and then we waited, and we had the break, and we spent at least 45 minutes. There's about 50 people in the room. Close to 24, 25 hours of man-hours were wasted. Man-hours, woman-hours were wasted sitting around waiting. The chair of The Chair, Vice Chair could have easily run the meeting until you arrived. So I just think people need to consider that. Again, I'd like to know why there was no meeting last week when we had four Commissioners available. We would have had a quorum and we could have conducted business last week. I don't think it's fair to the citizens to cancel meetings and not have meetings and miss things and then we have to have a longer meeting to make up for it. So it just doesn't make any sense to me. You know, I'd go so far as to support resignation and I'd support even Ms. Garcia, Commissioner Garcia to be the Chair here, so with Jeanie remaining as Vice Chair. So I think we just need to have some continuity here and let somebody run for office when they're going to run for office and not use the Chair position to put themselves at a political advantage, so. I had a good meeting with Secretary of State Representatives the other day, Friday, and we talked about voter rolls and voter integrity. They tell me that, I shared with them that I met with the registrar voters/clerk down in Doug, excuse me, Carson City, cleaned some 8,000 to 10,000 people off the rolls out there, just in a short order, cleaning up their rolls. And then the Secretary of State shared with me that Elko County had cleaned up their rolls and had taken 35% or 33% of the registered voters off the rolls because they were inactive or not voting and hadn't been on the rolls for some time. Can you imagine that a small county like Elko, taking 33% of the voters off the rolls to clean up the rolls? I bring this up time and time again. The Assessor rolls are clean, the Treasurer rolls are clean, this county knows how to have clean rolls. Most people don't understand when I'm talking about this, just to give you a little background, if the Assessor's rolls aren't clean, the Assessor gets to pay the taxes, the Assessor gets to go to jail, and to that point, the state of Nevada sends someone in every three years, it's called a ratio study, and it might be easier described as the IRS coming to audit you. They sit in our office for a number of months, they check every single way, and they make sure that we're charging the right amount, that people are being assessed the correct amount, so, and if it isn't correct, then the Assessor pays the price personally. So that's why, that's why we have clean rolls. I'm sure the Treasurer has the same situation. So why can't we clean up the rolls? That's been my issue all along, that the rolls are inaccurate. I shared with the registrar voters here ballots that continue to come to my house after I know the person's moved to Australia eight years ago. I shared it with the last two registrar voters, I shared it with this one, I shared it now with the Secretary of State, and those are just an example. At my house, my house, the county registrar voters is wrong half the time, okay? So if you extrapolate that out over the county, how many other names are on the rolls that shouldn't be? So also talking with the Secretary of State, discussing how they do, how they are going to conduct their elections in Nye County, and it sounds like Elko is talking about that today or tomorrow, I've asked, and I would like to ask, to have this on the agenda, that we copy what Nye County is doing. The Secretary of State, with Mr. Edwards present, said they were going to send me that information, and I think we should just follow their lead. They have some checks and balances that we don't have, and I think that we should be putting that on the agenda. So I'm asking that now at 11:25 today, to have that put on the agenda. So hopefully that'll happen. The other things that I've asked continually to be on the agenda, and they don't seem to come on the agenda, and we, somebody's got a stranglehold on this agenda. The other Commissioners here don't want to chime in, so they can't, because they'll violate the open meeting law. But at this point in time, I want to still see whether it passes or whether it doesn't pass in any of these other questions that I've asked, because I'd like to have a public have a debate about this, and I'd like the Commissioners to be able to talk about this. I want to know about having evening meetings, quarterly, once a month, something where the other citizens who are at work during the day can, they have an opportunity to come in and share with us their thoughts about the county. Many other municipalities throughout America have evening meetings, so everybody gets to have a voice. Also, so also the, I'd like to have it on the agenda to vote whether we can retroactively pay the county employees the money that they didn't receive when they hired, the County Manager's Office received their pay raises early. I'd like to, I'd like to have that on the agenda to vote on. Let's see how the County Commissioners, how the County Commissioners want to treat their employees of the county, so I'd like that to be on. I also talked about, probably two meetings ago, seeing a morning newscast with Grant Denton, and I thought maybe he would have been in last week, we didn't have a meeting, I thought maybe he'd be here this week. I've got some questions to ask him about things that were said on that morning news interview about the CARES campus. So I'm, I'd like to find out some more information about that. And lastly, for now, I want to probably give this to the clerk too, to put in the public record, the Sunday paper, March 10th, Fourth Street property values drop. The county owns the CARES campus. The city of Reno patrols the area. The city of Reno, in my opinion, is not doing a good enough job patrolling around our CARES campus. Therefore, we've got litter, public intoxication, bodily fluids, trash, you name it. I drive down that street every single day, even on the weekends, just to check out what's taking place over there. And it's a mess. And the county owns it, and we've got to figure out a way to take better care of the surrounding community. Business owners, the people are playing by the rules, they're getting their business licenses, they're paying their property tax, they're trying to run a business, whether it's retail or manufacturing, whatever they're doing, or their entertainment, whatever they're doing, and we're not helping them. People are thinking about leaving, people's businesses are off, and it's caused by the concentration of homeless individuals on Fourth Street. So those are some comments I'd like to make. And lastly, one last comment, the clerk passed this out, or she has or will pass this out about the registrar voters. The registrar voters that we've had an ongoing parade, a conga line of registrar voters here, we've had so many misstatements. Somebody claims that somebody's chased out because they've been threatened. Somebody says death threats. It's not true. There's a story in Pecan, Pecan Press, they came out, it has public records that are 180 degrees off from what the public is being fed. This is not right. Just be truthful with the public. Let's work together and figure this out. We need a Citizens Advisory Group with, working with the registrar voters, bipartisan, try to bring everybody to the table, but this is an ongoing issue and it won't get better by continually having the county tell us it's all good, don't look at it. Read this article, it's going to be in the public records, and let's have a rebuttal if it isn't true. I would like to hear the other side of the story. The stonewalling and sandbagging and not talking about what the public records, public records say one thing and the county's public statement is something entirely different. Something has, something isn't right there. I'd just like to get to the bottom of that. Thank you.
Commissioner Andrelli?
Thank you. I wanted to share some information that I think would be helpful, and both Vice Chair Herman and I belong to NACO, and at the last meeting we both attended, I spoke with the Chair, or the Executive Director of NACO, about looking at submitting the STAR program of Washto County for consideration for the NACO Achievement Award, that's a national recognition. So I'm working with Cadence Matovich and also with Chief Roper to submit that. The deadline for the application consideration is March 30th, so it's around the corner. So I think that stemmed from the discussion at NACO by other members of programs that addressed success in this particular instance, and it seemed to fit, and the Executive Director felt that way as well. So I'm hoping that not only we submit it, but we receive that accolade. So I wanted to share that information. I also wanted to just ask, and I know the County Manager has been very receptive to the requests that I've made several times about looking at local first, and I think there's an opportunity to expand that to include construction. Statutorily, there is provisions that are already, obviously statewide, that have language for local purchases and the benefit of that. So I'd like to just bring that up again and see if there's that opportunity to explore that. And then lastly, I really want to thank staff and thank Assemblywoman Hanson, specifically for allocating from her side of the jurisdictional exploration of the statutes that govern equine I have been in touch with the Legislative Council Bureau person that is working as, that's outside of Washto County's jurisdiction, so in parallel of the county, looking at what the codes are, what we can do, and exploring those changes. The Legislative Council Bureau, through Assemblywoman Hanson's direction, is also looking so that we can look at what we can really change, and I'm happy to, I'm eager actually, to see the report. Once the report comes out, then there'll be outreach efforts, because the people who are affected and the residents that are here all need to have a voice. So I'm eager for those meetings to start, and again, Assemblywoman Hanson is going to be attending all of those meetings as well. So more to come on that.
Thank you.
But we're trying to fix this, so I'm sure at some point it's coming back to the Commission for Action, but we're moving forward.
Yeah, you're working hard. Great. Commissioner Clark, I have you signed in again.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd also like to ask that I get, if I could, from Ms. Fianaca, a copy of that thumb drive that she has with emails and so forth. And then I'd also like to know a little bit more about what Betty Theeson talked about, a break-in and home robbery when somebody wasn't home and then the charges weren't filed. I'd like to have some more detail about how that happened and what really took place. There must be another side of the story if the District Attorney's Office decided not to pursue that, so I'd like to just find out a little bit more about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, or Vice Chair Herman, you're signed in again?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just was, have read a few things and heard a few things about money that was appropriated for safety for kids going to school, and this money has been re-appropriated for concrete walls for I-80.
That's not true.
Okay.
That was not a true statement, sadly. It was an opinion piece that was written. I'm so sorry to interrupt, but I do want to make sure that we don't get those misconceptions out there. The city of Reno actually met that grant for the Safe Schools for Kids, and RTC, we accepted that as part of our TIP, I think our last meeting.
Because that would have been terrible.
Horrible, horrible. It was a total misunderstanding.
Yeah. We sure don't need things like that going on.
No. Anything else, Vice Chair Herman?
Later.
Okay. Commissioner Garcia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I apologize in advance, I'm going to need about five minutes on this agenda item to address something that has been weighing on me. A couple of months ago, the DA's office forwarded me an email thread that involves correspondence from Commissioner Clark. A copy of this email has been sitting on my desk for months, because I've been debating whether or not to share it today. A couple of weeks ago, on February 29th, Commissioner Clark made it very clear that he does not wish to communicate with me via email, and his preference is that we bring things forward here at the DA's. While I do not think this is the best method of communication due to potential open meeting law violations, I still feel that I need to speak up today for two reasons. My family's safety and to counter the spread of misinformation. First, there were so many politically charged lies and misinformation about my residency during and after my campaign, that I feel the need to put it on the record here today, that I purchased a District 3 home last week and finished moving in over the weekend. While it should be a source of pride and excitement that I worked hard to purchase a three-bedroom home in a kid-friendly neighborhood, it is sad that I constantly weigh my family's vulnerability and safety. Why do I feel the need to bring this up today? Because I just moved and I'm still disgusted by the level of surveillance by several private investigators who in 2022 repeatedly approached my tenant, friends, and even went as low as to approach my special needs children when they answer the front door. These tactics are disgusting and beyond the pale. I'm not a U.S. Senator. I am not the Governor of Nevada. I'm a 43-year-old educator and public servant who lives alone with their two children. But it is sad that I felt the need to invest in a property on a dead-end street so I can see who is coming and going, invest in security cameras on my house, and to coach my children on how to deal with confrontational adults while out in public. Second, these personal attacks and allegations started two years ago. Once I got elected, I put my head down and I focused on the people's work, but it is still happening. So I'm going to go, I'm not going to be silent any longer. Back to the topic of my residency, I've asked Madam Clerk to please hand out copies of an official county email thread that continues to perpetuate this misinformation and clearly crosses the line into harassment, intimidation, and improper use of county emails. Commissioners, at the beginning of this email thread, you will see that on December 27th, an email originated from Denise Meyer, a District 3 Republican candidate that I faced in the 2022 general election, who unbeknownst to me, sent a letter to the District Attorney's Office earlier that fall. I opened her attached letter, which was dated on October 15th, only to read the same lies and misinformation that was spread about my residency during the campaign trail. The letter by Denise Meyer alleged that the proof of residency that I voluntarily submitted to KUNR Public Radio was somehow false, claimed that I took political donations under fraudulent circumstances, and demanded that I be investigated. But if you flip to the back page, you will see that the letter wasn't signed Denise Meyer, it was signed Denise Meyers. Five minutes later, on the same day, Commissioner Clark forwards the information to the District Attorneys, Mary Candares, Nate Edwards, and DA Christopher Hicks, and expresses an interest to talk more about it during their next scheduled meeting. A couple of hours later, I was included on the email thread to make sure that it was okay to provide Commissioner Clark with a very generalized response stating that this matter had already been reviewed and found to be without merit. I simply responded yes, because I was not surprised that even after 12 months, I was still being harassed about my residency. But it wasn't until later that I glanced down at the bottom of Commissioner Clark's email, and I was shocked, disappointed, and disturbed to see that the direction given to the DA's office to investigate me, his colleague, was not signed off by Commissioner Clark, rather it was signed off with these two words, "Thanks, Candy." Madam Chair, understanding that we cannot deliberate due to open meeting law, I believe Commissioner Clark owes not only the Commission, but also the members of the public, an explanation about the inaccurate signatures on this email thread. Does Commissioner Clark simply prefer to go by the name Candy? What is the likelihood that Denise Meyer, who is now candidate for Ward 3, would misspell her own last name when signing the letter? What concerns me the most is that this is not the first time where I have seen "Thanks, Candy" written at the bottom of Commissioner Clark's government email giving direction to county staff. Madam Chair, is this the same Candy, candygreen@gmail.com, who sent out a press release about... Madam Chair, is this the same Candy, candiegreen@gmail.com, who sent out a press release about Swan Lake on December 12th, 2022, on Commissioner Clark's behalf when he was county assessor? Because I've already verified this is not Candy Ramos, Candy E. Ramos, in our county manager's office. I'm honestly asking these questions because I'm not in the habit of having other people write emails for me and claiming their words as my own. But perhaps this is an arrangement that Commissioner Clark and Candy have. Personally, I find it extremely unprofessional and disheartening that someone would conduct county business under false pretenses. But perhaps Commissioner Clark sees the situation differently. To me, giving direction to the DA's office under the auspices of someone named Candy could be perceived as an abuse use of power. But maybe Commissioner Clark feels that this is an ethical practice. Every time we log into our laptop, there is a notice that pops up reminding us that our computer is the property of Washoe County and for authorized use only. Ultimately, I want to know if Commissioner Clark is giving others access to his county email or to his work computer. Again, Madam Chair, I know this is out of the ordinary. I don't like wasting taxpayer dollars on countering misinformation, but as a protective mother with two young children, I am sick and tired of the harassment, intimidation, and conspiracy theories that have affected my personal life and have now made their way into county official business. Commissioner Clark has recently said he has no interest in communicating with me except for at the DA's, so I welcome his response to the email thread that I've provided here today. And using your own words, let's be truthful with the records.
Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Whenever someone comes to me with questions, I forward the questions on. I forward the question on to the DA's office to ask why, why, and if there was a response, if we could talk about it, if it needed to be talked about. So when somebody brings something to my attention, I ask questions. And asking questions seems to irritate people around here. There's so many things that need to be questioned, and when somebody brings up a question, it should be answered. I feel horrible that Commissioner Garcia feels threatened by answering these questions. It shouldn't have been that way. And if somebody else had a question about her residency and I forwarded it on to the DA, or if they forwarded a question on to the DA and the DA hadn't responded to them, the question was forwarded on by me to get a response. Once we find out the answer to questions, we move on, and there's other things that we can handle. So I'm always going to ask questions, and I'll continue to ask questions. So that's my response. Thank you.
Commissioner Clark, I know nobody else can talk right now, but you didn't answer my questions.
I believe I did answer your question. I think it's horrible that you feel threatened. I didn't threaten you. I asked questions, and if, I'm sorry if that bothered you, but it was not a threat from me. Thank you.
The question wasn't whether or not you forwarded responses or asked for clarification from the DA's office, which we all have a tendency to do and what is within our purview. The questions I asked is if you are giving access to your government email and/or your computer to launch attacks against your colleagues.
No.
Any other Commissioner comments or announcements? I'm not seeing any, so we will move to Item 6. And Commissioner Garcia, do you mind reading in the donation into the record?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
This is Item A61. Thank you to the Cachelle family for the donation of the Silver Western Saddle valued at $6,900 for community outreach programs and special events.
Thank you. Is that a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Looking for a second. Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. Madam Clerk, any public comment on this item? Okay, with a motion and a second, any questions on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Okay, that motion passes unanimously. We are now moving to our consent items. Do any commissioners want to pull a consent item, or do any commissioners have questions on the consent items before you today? I'm not seeing any. Vice Chair Harmon, are you motioning? You don't? Okay. And Madam Clerk, isn't there any public comment on consent?
There is none.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion on the consent.
I'll move to approve as presented.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. All right, and that motion passes. Madam Vice Chair, could you please propose a block for us today? Thank you. Okay. Is that in the form of a motion?
That is, yes.
Okay, and I'm looking for a second on the block. Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. And Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments on those items?
We do. On Item 14.
Okay.
We have Penny Brock. She will be speaking on 14 and 16.
Okay.
I didn't hear Commissioner Harmon make the block, so that took me off guard. Anyway, getting to Number 14, that deals with senior services, they're going to remodel the Ninth Street, which is great. It's phase one. How much money is going to be dumped into that Ninth Street facility, which we know is being taken over by the CARES Campus people? That is not going to want, seniors are still not going to want to go there because we still have a problem. It's being taken over by the homeless and the CARES Campus people. That is not going to help. How many phases are we going to have? Why don't you put that money into a facility in South Reno, West Reno, or Northwest Reno? I keep coming up time after time after time to say, we've got a problem here with Reno and providing for the seniors. Sparks is great. They're great. Even Las Vegas is great. They even use their libraries. So I keep coming up and saying, why can't we use the libraries in those particular areas? But it turns on deaf ears continually. So my first question is, how many phases are we going to have on this Ninth Street facility that still won't fix the problem for the seniors? They do not want to come down here because it's not inviting because of the homeless issues. So I would just ask that you would, number one, how many phases? We want to know how much of our taxpayer money is going to be dumped in to a facility that seniors don't want to use. Thank you.
Thank you.
Levon Brooks?
It's been a while since I've been before this August Committee, Commissioners, actually, Board of Commissioners, and it's an honor to be here this morning. Many of you don't know me. I think I only know one of you. And I am Levon Brooks. I'm the ED for a nonprofit in our community, High Street Industries and WRC. And we have served this community, all of the Northern Nevada area, for serving people with disabilities for many years, combined service of over 100 years. I'm not that old. I did start a long time ago when some of you probably weren't even born yet. I've been doing this job for 24 years and extremely happy to participate. And my comment is just to say how, in light of, there are so many things that we cannot fix. I agree, our seniors, our senior issues are many. And then couple that with being a senior citizen who is neurodiverse. And you're 64 years old, and all you've ever known is a day service program. And so what we started many years ago, we set out to build a better process for teaching children of neurodiversity. And we've come so far and have had over 400 people participate with the methodology that we're using, and we're now using that with children, and we're making amazing strides in families with children who are neurodiverse. And so we're happy that we're going to be participating with the county in a pilot to work with foster kids and apply what we've learned in that system. So the point is that if we can precisely identify skills, strengths, and opportunities early in childhood development, then we can make a difference for avoiding long-term care and long-term learning issues later for that child and the family. And it's a complete family wraparound system. We also have training that we do with families as well. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
Janet Butcher?
Janet Butcher, for the record, please enter my comments into the minutes verbatim. No, you're not going to answer me, but why did we skip over eight, nine, one, two, three, four, five, six? Anyway, that's the way I count.
We'll come back to it.
And I know you will. However, I want to know why. I ask why, comprehension, why. And I did not get to hear what the block votes were. So I would ask if anybody comes up during a block vote, if they would talk to which one they're talking about instead of, because, and I don't know what the block votes were, but I know you won't tell me. So I will probably go back and listen to the minutes later on so that I can gather the information because I keep track of voting records. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in on these items.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So we have a motion to block vote 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, and 16 from Vice Chair Harmon. And I'm sorry, I forgot who the second was.
Commissioner Andriola.
Commissioner Andriola, thank you. And Vice Chair Harmon, you have a few comments on the block?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On 10 and 11, well, they're kind of tied together. How many new attorneys do we have? Are we in a lot of trouble? Just curious. So just curious. I mean, this is a lot of money that we're spending on extra space, so I'd like, you know, to get some more information on that. And then on 13, I'm hoping that since we're finally getting around to this, taking care of the seniors, I hope that some of the recommendations that Commissioner Clark came up with, like maybe showers and a few things like that, are in the plan at some time in the future. So just my comment. And then is there a code of conduct regarding Agenda Item 15? Just another thing, just curious about that. And then I just wanted to make sure that in Item 16, that we're being super, super, super careful about where these kids are going. There's an awful lot of little kids that end up in sex trafficking, and I'd hate to see us be responsible for any of it. Thank you much.
Thank you. And Commissioner Clark, are you signing for comments on this?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Also, on Item 11 and 12, I'm just wondering if there's any plans for any enlargement or enlarging the area, work area, and if they need any enlarged work area for the public defender and the alternative public defender. It seems like when the District Attorney's Office gets improved work area, I'm wondering if there's some equilibrium there, some balance with the public defender and the alternative public defender. So that's my question. Thank you.
Thank you. So with a motion and a second, we've taken public comment, and we've had Commissioner comments. Any other Commissioner comments on this? I'm not seeing any. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And that passes. And we will now go back up to Item 8, Mr. Manager.
Item 8 is a recommendation to approve the appointment of one candidate to fill a term beginning on the date of appointment and ending on December 31st, 2025, for the Washoe County Open Space and Regional Parks Commission. Applicants for the vacancy include Jessica Brown, Matthew DiMartini, Barbara S. Finney, Sean Hill, Kami S. Hitty, Matthew B. Kempf, Robert A. Laurie, James McNamara, Luke M. Rupi, Tammy Rougeau, Charles Wellington, Charles Wellington III.
Thank you, Mr. Manager.
We have Alexandria Wilson here to help us today.
Great. And before I kick it to you, Ms. Wilson, I know Commissioner Garcia spends a lot of time on this board, and I was curious if there was a recommendation that you had in particular that you'd like to announce for the board to consider as part of the process.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to first thank all the wonderful applicants, and I believe personally that Sean Hill is the voice that we need on this board. That was creepy music. So Sean Hill is the voice, I believe, we need on this board. He's a very well-respected nonprofit leader in outdoor education. He's got almost 10 years of executive leadership. He's a supporter of education in general and outdoor access. And last year, he conducted a successful pilot program in District III that was very, very successful and greatly appreciated. And I think that him stepping up and wanting to be and participating in the Washoe County Leadership Academy is just another layer of his dedication to this role, and I think he'd be wonderful.
Thank you. That's very helpful to hear the perspective of the Commissioner who sits on the board and understands the dynamics and what is needed on the board. So thank you so much for sharing that. And Ms. Wilson, if you'll let us know what we are to do today.
Perfect. Alexandria Wilson, for the record, part of Commission Support. So today, you will select your top two candidates out of, I believe, the 10, 11 that are listed. The clerk will hand out the ballots for the first round of voting, and we have four subsequent voting rounds if needed, but hopefully we'll get through it by then.
Okay, great to know. And Madam Clerk, I see that we have some public comment.
We have Robert Laurie signed in.
Thank you.
Is there Robert Laurie? There's nobody else signed in. Oh, here we go.
Madam Chair, members of the Commission, good morning. I very much appreciate your time this morning. By email dated March 2nd, I submitted a statement of my qualifications. I will use my limited time here this morning to provide a summary of those comments. One, I attempt to live by and operate by the no-surprise rule. I attempt to be open and transparent in my language and my actions. I have been publicly vetted at the local, state, federal, and military levels for a long period of time. No surprises. However, I would note that some years ago, I had the opportunity to review one of those reviews. And that review actually used the terminology in describing me as boring but effective. And my initial reaction to seeing that was somebody had a conversation with my wife. And that's how it ended up in the report. In any case, generally speaking, what you see is what you get. Number two, I am familiar with boarding- Number two, I am familiar with board and commission operations. For the entirety of my professional life, I have either served on, provided legal counsel to, or conducted business with boards, commissions, or similar entities. One element that I have learned over a period of time is to rely on the term respect. Respect not only to staff, which is essential, but more importantly, respect to the public for which you serve. Finally, I would note that I have subject matter expertise. I have extensive land use experience from both sides of the table. I have land finance experience. I have taught the subject at the law school level. I have the capacity for vision, which is necessary when planning such things as open space and recreational activities. Thank you very much for your time. You have an excellent pool of candidates to choose from.
Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, I think we're ready for the ballots. And it's two candidates, as a reminder.
Chair Hill selected Barbara Finney and Sean Hill. Vice Chair Herman selected Matthew DiMartini and Sean Hill. Clara Andreola, Robert Laurie, and James McNamara. Mike Clark, Robert Laurie, and Tammy Raggo. Marius Garcia, Sean Hill.
Okay, I think that's three votes for Mr. Hill.
For Mr. Hill.
Okay. So, I am looking for a motion on that.
So, move.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. In a second. Thank you, Vice Chair Herman. Any questions on the motion for Mr. Hill? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Congratulations. Pretty sure. Yes. Okay. Congratulations, Mr. Hill. Thank you so much for signing up, and thank you for everyone for applying, and continue to, please stay engaged. There's so many opportunities to be part of Washoe County, and we're thrilled that you're interested. Yes.
May I also just echo the point about encouraging everyone to apply, but I also want to recognize Alexandra Wilson, who, since I've been here, has been working diligently to not only formalize everything, but to actually spread it out in the community in a much deeper way. So, she's worked really, really hard. I appreciate being part of that process, and I want to recognize her for all of her hard work.
Thank you. Yes, she is a star. Oh, my gosh, look at that. That's so cool. And I know, Commissioner Andrea, you've been helping with that process as well, so thank you both. Okay, with that, we're going on to the next item, Mr. Manager. And I don't think you have to, do you have to read all the names into the record? That's a lot.
No.
Ninety-two, ninety? Yes, okay.
That's good. Thank you for that. So, Item 9 is a recommendation to appoint one candidate from a pool of applicants listed in the staff report pursuant to, for the County Library Board of Trustees pursuant to NRS 379.020, Section 3, beginning on April 1, 2024, and ending on June 30, 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, and welcome again, Ms. Wilson.
Hi there, Alexandra Wilson, for the record. First, I just want to say thank you, Commissioner Andrea for the kind comments. It has been the support of the board that we were able to move this forward. So, before you, you have 87 applicants. So, there's been a lot of numbers thrown out. I just want to make sure to clarify that for the record. We did have 89. Two had asked to remove their applications. So, currently, you have 87 in front of you for the nomination of round one. You will choose your top three candidates out of the 87, and then, we will move down to two, and then to one, and hopefully, have a winner from there.
But if we have three votes on round one?
We can move.
Okay.
Yeah, we can move to vote.
Great. That's very helpful. So, three candidates. And Madam Clerk, I see we have some public comment.
We do. There's plenty of people signed in, so if you're the second name called, please queue yourself up. First up, we have Tammy Ruff, followed by Kathleen Whitfield.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I am Tammy Ruff. I've been a resident of Reno for the past 52 years, and I am an enthusiastic and confident candidate for the library trustee position before you today for an appointment. Librarian and former First Lady Laura Bush said, "I have found the most valuable thing in my wallet is my library card." Indeed, when my parents moved our family to Reno in May of 1972, the first thing my mother did was take us to the downtown Reno Library to check out books. I have vivid memories of visiting the library and cross, excuse me, and crossing the jungle bridge, as I called it, turning right and heading downstairs to the children's section to wander the stacks, looking for my next best read. That flagship branch and the northwest branch remain favorites in my continuing search for the next best read. In addition to visiting both library branches often, I'm a devoted user of the library's Libby app and routinely have six to 12 books on hold. My husband and I have two grown daughters, and we raised both of them to be ardent readers and library patrons. Even though they live out of state, they too have memories of these library locations and continue to be fervent readers in their local communities. Libraries are vibrant places where the stories of our past, present, and future are discovered, places where everyone is welcomed through the door and encouraged to find what they're looking for, a place to learn, a place to create, a place to expand your mind. I would like to be a part of supporting the continued growth of the Washoe County Library in our community. Earning my library media specialist credential in 2010 and serving as a librarian at North Valley's High School for six years gives me a vast amount of experience and the knowledge needed to support the growth of our library system. From program development and implementation to collection development and effective budgetary management, I've done it all. Additionally, I believe my 26, excuse me, 26 years of teaching experience with the Washoe County School District has honed my listening and strategic communication skills. I was an active member of numerous districts and school-wide committees, effectively communicating with a variety of individuals, many with strong opinions. I'm known by my teaching colleagues and former students as an excellent listener and communicator, all while maintaining a sense of fairness for all concerned parties. Thank you for your consideration for this trustee appointment. I can assure you, if selected, I will serve with dignity and decorum. Thank you.
Kathleen Whitfield, followed by Roger Edwards.
Hi, I'm Kathleen, or as most people call me, Kate Whitfield. My husband and I moved here in October of 2022 from North Texas. So, we were just in time for that lovely winter storm, and we still love Washoe County. We just absolutely enjoy it. And one of the very first things we did when we bought our house, even before we were moving, was get our Washoe County library cards. To me, libraries are an essential resource for the community as a whole, whether young or old, regardless of your political, moral, spiritual, personal perspective. The libraries are essential for all of us. I have private experience in North Texas as a library board member, as president of the Friends of the Library in my North Texas town, and I was elected to the local public school board three times and served as president. So, I've had a lot of board experience. I have much more than that, but those are the public ones that are relevant. And as a recently retired attorney, I bring a focus on collaboration. I know not all attorneys do that, but that was, that's the way I work. And as a member, if I were to be chosen for the library board of trustees, I would strive to facilitate cooperation among our charges, the things that we are supposed to be doing as a library board, to make sure we make the best use of the finite resources available to the library, to make the library continue to be what it should be, which is an open and welcoming meeting place and resource for all the people in the community, whether they're newcomers, old-timers, children, adults. It's so important. I was president of our local library the day after the 9/11, and we had a book review happening that next morning. And it was so encouraging to see people come from all over our community to be together in a place that was safe and welcoming to all. And I think that's what libraries represent and should continue to do. And I think the library board's focus should be making sure that the library remains open and connects people by the mission statement with information, ideas, and experience to support an enriched and engaged community, one person, no matter what they look like or how old they are, at a time. Thank you for considering me. Thank you.
Roger Edwards, followed by Nathan Robison.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and public service. Roger Edwards, for the record. I too am applying for the open position on the library board. I'm a lifelong conservative. I'm a Christian, father of three, grandfather of five, great-grandfather of two. I've served on many boards and commissions in the county, eight years on planning commission, four years on regional, 37-year military veteran. Been in management for my entire life. I've been to board meetings and commissions and planning this and that, and I've been in the middle of it forever, since I was like 20 years old. I listened to Mrs. Billings come up and talk about her former involvement with the library, and I'm very impressed. But I also realize that all the people that were involved with the library contributed to the confusions going on there right now. We need people that can work together and have a conservative view, in my point, in my view, have a conservative stance about opening up the library system to the community. We have so many great programs that are going on right now, and we need to just focus on that sort of thing. Nothing that I love better than walking into the library and seeing 20 students on the floor with a book in their hand, involved in some presentation that we have going on. It's heartwarming. I've served on so many boards and commissions that the application process did not have enough room for me to even get my stuff on there, so I had to come up and say it. I've been before you folks many, many times, and I was thinking back, I was trying to remember when I would have brought my two daughters to the library. I think it was 1974 when I brought them in the first time. I've been a lifelong supporter of the library system and the county, and I asked for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nathan Robison, followed by Valerie Fianaca.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Nathan Robison, for the record. I'm an engineer, a business owner, and a 34-year resident of District 5. My family uses the South Valley Library weekly, and it's been a very important part of our life. I'm the father of three, and they're now all adults, and they came through the Washoe County Public School system. One of my children is gay. One of them is asexual and non-binary. And they did have their troubles coming up through school, particularly elementary and middle school, but they're doing great now. I'm thinking here, and why I'm here is because I'm thinking of the many LGBTQ kids who do not have it as easy as mine do, who are neurodivergent or hard to deal with or just weird, and they can have a really hard time in school. I think that those kids have the school, their friends, and institutions like the library to help them understand themselves in the world they live in, and they may not have other resources. This is, there's a movement out there to pretend, I think, maybe wish, maybe even force, these type of kids not to exist. I think we should resist that. Library censorship is abhorrent in a free society. And because it's hard enough to be weird, it's much harder to be invisible. There was a time when cruelty to gay kids was normal, bullying, beating, encouragement to suicide was considered socially acceptable. That time is something we should be ashamed of and not nostalgic for. I therefore ask you only to appoint a librarian when you make your vote today rather than a zealot. And if I had a vote, Ms. Tammy Ruff, who you heard from earlier, would be mine, but I respect your choice, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Valerie Fianaca, followed by Linda Schmidt.
Valerie Fianaca, for the record, and you all know I'm weird already, so let's just put that out there. I'm going to go against my compatriots, and they're used to it, so I'm going to apologize ahead of time. I'm going to advocate for Bonnie Billings. She's from District 4. She already serves on our CAB and has been very respectful from the citizens, as far as I am concerned. All the CAB meetings I've gone to, she's been absolutely respectful. She has experience sitting on a library board in a large county, Santa Clara County, I believe. I've only met her once this morning, so please don't infer that she knows me, as that would probably not help her in this situation. I've only met her coming in the door here. It should not be anyone who's been outspoken here at school board meetings or at library board of trustee meetings. We don't need someone who brings any more controversy to this board as it's seen its share. Doesn't need anymore.
Thank you.
Linda Schmidt, followed by Brooke Westlake.
My name is Linda Schmidt, and I've lived in Washoe County for 30 years. This is my third time before you to register my willingness and interest to serve on this library board. The reason I desire to do this is because I don't feel that District 4 is represented fairly well. I think it would be nice to have someone from the Sparks Wingfield area to be on this board. I absolutely meet your requirements. I'm over 18 years of age. Today is my birthday, by the way.
Happy birthday.
I'm not an elected official. I am definitely aware of the library's role in our community as a place of learning, and I'm willing to donate and devote time that's needed to perform the duties of a trustee. I'm also not controversial. I care about the people of Washoe County. I am a public servant retired from the City of Sparks. I currently volunteer to help homeless women get a restart. I believe the library is a place of growth and learning for everyone, and I'm hoping the third time's a charm. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you.
Brooke Westlake, followed by Charles Wellington.
Good morning. Why did the cardiologist recommend to his patients go to the library? Because he heard they were good for circulation. Hello, my name is Brooke Westlake, and I'm happy to reintroduce myself. I've been in Washoe County since 1989. I'm excited to be up for this possible appointment for the library board as a trustee, but first, some of my experience. I come with 25 years of working experience. 15 of those years of experience are in leadership, communication, sales, marketing, and most importantly, team building. Today, we need team building and communication in the community for our libraries. My current appointments by three different Nevada governors include being a lay member for the Northern Nevada Bar Board. I'm a commissioner for the Board of I'm a commissioner for the Board of Examiners for Long-Term Care Facilities, and this year was appointed to the State Bar of Nevada for the fee disputes. Previously, I sat on the women, the Nevada Commission for Women, that, until I turned down. Today, why I'm excited to be here is because I stand before you as a mom who struggled with reading my entire life. In fact, my entire life throughout elementary, middle school, and high school, I was in special ed classes for reading. When my oldest son was in school, it was apparent that he was also having extreme difficulties with reading. He was diagnosed with dyslexia at eight-years-old, and I was diagnosed with it at 36. I'm happy to say that I never let my dyslexia or my struggles stop me from pursuing higher education. I hold three degrees. Including, at the age of 37, after giving birth to my second and final child, I earned a master's degree from UNR in criminal justice. I'm passionate about the possibility of being on this board because I can testify to my own struggles with reading and how I've risen above one of the most difficult things in my own life. I know how hard it, I know how to work well with others from all areas of life and enjoy building teams. I'm a wonderful communicator, and I'm here to be a part of the Washoe County Library Team and would be honored to serve as a library trustee for my community. Fun fact about me, at Roger Corbett in 6th grade, I won a bookmark contest that was then published and distributed throughout our community, and I still have a copy of it to this day. I see so many wonderful things that we can do to add to our community with libraries. Thank you again. My name is Brooke Westlake, and I'm honored to serve, it would be an honor to serve my community as a library trustee, as a mom, leader, and a member of my community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Charles Wellington, followed by Joni Hammond.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. This is my first time actually being in front of you guys. My name has been up here quite a few times. I love the idea of being a part of the library system, being on the Board of Trustees. It's one of those things where I've moved all over my entire life from Southern California, northern, as far east as Oklahoma, and I've been here in Nevada since 2005. It's one of those situations where I have a lot of fond memories of growing up and going to the library. My parents got divorced, so with having a single mother and a single father, oftentimes when they were at work, the best place to go for me was the library. And it's one of those things, I know how important it truly is to the community. I know there's a lot of situations going on right now with it. I just want to be able to contribute in a very positive way. Throughout my life, it's always been one of the situations where I've been, worked with many diverse groups. And now, being a father and having a kid on the way, I look forward to opportunities like, you know, reading "Good Night Mood" to them, and, you know, Calvin and Hobbes, and different books like that, that when I think of being a kid or reading "The Hardy Boys" and stuff like that, you know, giving them an opportunity. I know a lot of kids nowadays, you know, yeah, we have technology and whatnot, but so many people don't have access to this. And having a library is such an important part of being able to give people access. And there is something, to me, that's emotionally profound by holding a book in your hands. One of the things that I've been able to have compared to many other people is the ability to actually write books. I am a published author, I write epic fantasy, and it's no small feat to write 150,000 words plus just for a single book. And I've done that four times now. So, my name is up here. I realize you guys have 87 applicants. Obviously, it's one of those situations where, you know, they all, probably within their hearts, have something fond to remember. Otherwise, why would you want to be on the board, especially for a library, you know? But I hope to be able to contribute positively, and I look forward to the opportunity to possibly be selected. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Joni Hammond, followed by Alana Fitzgerald.
Good afternoon, Chair and Commissioners. I have a follow-up and example of complete bias against conservatives throughout the library system, both the librarians and library director. You heard the disdain, ridicule, and emails by the library director when Ms. Fianaca spoke. This goes throughout the librarians in Washoe County. I observed this firsthand when I worked at a library for the PPP. The librarians did not like that a person with a sign saying "caucus" was standing in the parking lot. The librarians came in several times, took photos, and asked the poll workers how to kick him out of the property as he was illegally campaigning. The caucus sign man was well past the 100-foot electioneering rate rule, so we told the librarians he was not violating anything with elections. Then they said they were going to call the sheriff's office to kick him out of the parking lot, as they did not want him to have the caucus man there. Obvious bias. Please appoint a conservative to the library board and try to level the field. Thank you.
Alana Fitzgerald, followed by Candace Powell.
Almost good afternoon, I think, at this point. Alana Fitzgerald, again. I am a long, long-term resident in-
Do you want to pull down the microphone, ma'am? I'm sorry. Thank you.
In Washoe County. Retired social worker and a loyal, happy library patron. You have a big decision ahead of you. I'd simply like to ask that you consider how important our libraries are to everyone in our community. They should continue to be a safe and comforting place that embraces all people, instead of trying to make any groups feel unwelcome or excluded in the books and other materials that are kept on the shelves and available. Selecting a new trustee for the board is a daunting task. I don't envy you at all. And to add an individual who is known to be against inclusiveness is, I believe, the opposite of what is needed for good governance of our library system. So, I do hope you have good information to guide you through your selections. Thank you.
Thank you.
Candace Powell, followed by Janet Butcher. We will distribute her documents for the record.
Hello. I'm Candace Powell. I am a parent and a proud library cardholder. I'm here to lend my voice in the unwavering support of our incredible libraries and as an ally of the LGBTQIA+ community. Today, I am here to ask you to consider the behavior, and consequently, the character of many of the individuals running for the open library trustee position. There are individuals seeking this important role that are perpetrators of intimidation and trauma of small children at library events. I have a direct example of this disgusting behavior, one that specifically disregards the agency of my own children. On June 15th, these people, who care so deeply for young children, also spewed hate around my two- and six-year-old children as we entered the library for Drag Queen Story Hour. At our favorite library location, the downtown library, my innocent children were unnerved by scary people who violated their privacy. These protesters violated my children's privacy by filming and photographing them without consent. There's photos included of them taken by the RGJ, and some of them are in this room today. My kids were frightened, and I was and still am very angry. Fortunately, our library system was prepared with the wonderful Umbrella Volunteers, and my children quickly got into the welcoming environment that Ms. Ginger Devine and our downtown library created. My oldest was visibly relieved, and once we were with Ms. Ginger, she said, "Phew, we are safe." I have photos taken by RGJ of those individuals who harassed the children entering the library that day. Imagine, if they are so brazen to take children's pictures without parental consent, what else will they do without regard to people's agency and safety? What gives them the right to decide this on their own? Devastatingly, this library location is now a place my children associate with fear and harassment. My daughter asked if the man taking her photos was a kidnapper. He's also one of the people applying for this role. I implore you to consider these actions in your assessment of whether or not these individuals should be associated with our libraries. Anyone intimidating children and violating their privacy should not be rewarded with a position of power. The first criteria when considering a trustee is they must demonstrate use and appreciation of our libraries. Documented harassment of toddlers is certainly a use, but it should not be the bar we are setting for this important role in our community. Let us choose a trustee who will champion inclusivity and uphold diverse programming in our libraries, be the nurturing spaces where everyone is welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Janet Butcher, followed by Frederick Clayton.
Janet Butcher, for the record. Please enter my comments into the minutes verbatim. Yeah, you have lots of really great applicants, but as, as we've talked about before, the, you, there, there is a group of people who promote equity and, and, but yet you're not equitable in your appointing people to different boards, and especially the library board. We need someone who can be financially responsible, ask the right questions. How is the money being spent? Where is it being spent? Why is it being spent? Is it a personal agenda to push for something? The library, yes, full of books, and everybody can talk about, "Oh, I started reading when I was four, and I always went to the library." And that's wonderful, and I don't mean to sound like I'm down, putting that down, because I'm not. I spend a lot of time. In fact, my mom used to say to me, "Well, you put the book down and go outside and play with the rest of the kids." But it is not the place for social engineering. And I've listened to a couple people make comments about, and it is continual misinformation and lies. Nobody is trying to keep anybody out of the library. People are asking to have sexual books with pictures. They want their kids to be exposed to that? Buy the damn books. Expose your kids. But it doesn't need to be at an eye level for children. And, and so, when they keep talking about this book banning thing, it's a lie. Nobody is trying to ban books, except for, I think, Huckleberry Finn got banned, Gone with the Wind got banned by the Library Association. But we're just asking for responsibility. The director, right now, can't even tell how much money is being spent. It's easy. I, I used to have to do a cost analysis on being able to put a computer on somebody's desk. How was I going to save the company money if I gave that person a, a computer? So, if he can't do that, and the other thing, too, I'm, I, I wasn't even going to bring this up, but I am going to. Drag Queen Story Hour can be held at our center. Why not? Do you know why? Because of insurance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Frederick Clayton.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Frederick Clayton, known to most of my current colleagues and friends as Martin, which is my middle name, and that's a long story by itself. I was born here in Reno, but I've spent enough time in enough different places to form a flexibility and diversity of outlook, and I consider myself adaptable to situations. Unfortunately, or maybe not so unfortunately, my father moved me out of Nevada after he graduated from UNR in 1940. my first library experience was when we were back here in Reno, when I started 1st grade in 1945. We lived on West Second Street. I walked with my little brother down to the downtown Reno Library, the old one, for the Saturday morning programs they had there, as well as checking out books. I've been a client, or a customer, if you will, of many types of libraries, public libraries, school libraries. My only experience with working on the other side of the counter was when I was in the service. I was, worked in the ship's library on an aircraft carrier. One of the most interesting libraries in terms of content that I've ever been in, although it was a small, relatively small one, was the United States Information Service Library in Kabul, Afghanistan. Libraries are mostly what their content is, not how they are housed. I tend to be financially conservative, and, but I had a aunt who had a son who had reading problems, and she opened my eyes to a different viewpoint. She didn't care, much care what he read, as long as he practiced reading. He liked tot rod magazines. But with that, I'll say thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, so I think we're ready for the ballots. Again, Ms. Wilson, how many folks do you want us to choose?
Alexandra Wilson, for the record. It would be your top three for the first round.
Top three. All right, thank you.
Chair Hill is nominating Ron Ariel, Manny Becerra, and Tammy Ruff. Vice Chair Herman, Roger Edwards, Scott Finley, and Bruce Parks. Commissioner Andriola, Bonnie Billings, Andrea Caldwell, and Linda Schmidt. Commissioner Garcia, Manny Becerra, Marie Rodriguez, and Tammy Ruff. Commissioner Clark, Virginia Nolte, Marie Rodriguez, and Kathleen Whitfield.
Okay, so if that is the case, we have Rodriguez, Becerra, and Ruff as our next ballot options. Is that true, Ms. Wilson?
It was. I'm sorry, can you repeat that again?
Becerra, Ruff, and Rodriguez is the top three? Is that how we're doing it?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
Perfect.
Thank you. And then you want us to choose one from that, those three?
Yeah, we had said to choose the top two, but since we are down to already three, we can choose your top one.
Okay, top one. So, one choice between Becerra, Ruff, and Rodriguez. So one choice between Becerra, Ruff, and Rodriguez.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Thank you. Vice Chair Herman, Tammy Ruff. Commissioner Garcia, Marie Rodriguez. Commissioner Andreola, Tammy Ruff. Commissioner Clark, Marie Rodriguez.
Okay, well, it looks like we have the top three for Ms. Ruff, so I am looking for a motion on that.
So move.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia, looking for a second. Thank you, Vice Chair Herman. Any questions or comments on this item before we vote? I'm seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And it looks like Ms. Ruff is our new library trustee. Congratulations, and thank you to everyone who applied. Please continue to stay involved. We are so honored you want to be part of Washoe County and look forward to working with you in the future. So with that, it is 12:43. We are going to take a lunch until 1:30. We will see you then. Thank you so much.[722.62]
Duty to public service, tolerance, fairness, courtesy, and professionalism. The updated version adds the expectation of promoting a positive work environment by prohibiting bullying, outlines the investigation process for complaints made under the Code of Conduct, and establishes a biennial training requirement for employees on bullying. The training requirement will be accomplished through an online training that will be available on their approval of the updated code.
Thank you very much. And do we have a representative here to discuss the policy if commissioners have questions? Do I, yeah, it looks like we'd like just, how about a brief overview and history for us?
Good afternoon, Commissioner. Patricia Hurley, Human Resources, for the record. The Code of Conduct has been with us since, I want to say, back in the 2000, 2003. It's been a long time and is much needed to be updated. Just as it was mentioned on the subject line, we have new values. We also want it to reflect bullying. It's been a constant kind of concern when people try to use that word, to understand what that can mean, what we can look into, what we can understand. Also, training, because we do know that sometimes that word can be used a lot, or even what conduct should mean, and so we're going to be adding some training requirements for that as well. And one of the big things is this would be expanded to all employees, officials, and any of those that work for the Board of County Commissioners. So I just wanted to add all that. Is there anything more you'd like me to add? It has been in place, it's just now an update and it's time to refresh it.
And I think it's so great that we're holding elected officials as well as our appointed officials to the same standards that we're holding our employees. So I don't have any questions, but I see Vice Chair Herman is signed in.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Could you just spell out the changes that are different? Because I know you've had it forever, ever since I've been here. Anyhow, so...
Yes.
Yeah, just the major changes so that we know, you know, how drastic it is and, you know, scary and...
No problem.
Okay.
It is also in an attachment as well as a redline version, but I'll be happy to kind of set, so what it is, is we've done a lot of formatting changes as well. So one of the biggest things you'll see is the Code of Conduct is now formatted in our new way that we format all policies. The first part is stating our purpose, so why the policy comes into play, stating, you know, fostering a healthy, positive, and productive work environment. It also sets forth expectations of its employees, again, adding that officials and any persons representing Washoe County will also be held to these same standards. It further defines that as we go through this. It also talks about conduct while on duty and some of those expectations that we have related to that. The second part of this will, does update to our new value statements, which hasn't been done in quite a while, to include just the use to have much more, such as community, quality public service. We've now narrowed it down to the three that has been focused at the Board, which is integrity, effective communication, and quality public service. We did get out, I mean, we did move some things around, so some of the things that you see removed have been moved to other places in the policy, again, following the format that we use for policies that we have now. It further defines to more modern terms what honesty is, and formatting that in a way where it's, you know, it can be read easier. So it goes in, defines all those in the one for honesty. It talks about employees and other representatives shall strive, and again, what those conduct should be. For B, again, employees and others, what further kind of defines honesty. For respect, same thing, further defining that. Duty to serve, what kind of expectations we have when it comes to those. Some of the newer changes that you will, tolerance, fairness, courtesy, and professionalism, all of that's included as well. One of the things you will see is there's a whole new section related to bullying and what that, what examples of bullying is, and how we can, you know, what we would expect not to happen when it comes to that, and what we would expect that people wouldn't do. It also talk, it adds a portion related to training, that we will have mandatory training every two years for employees, and it also outlines, which didn't have in the prior Code of Conduct, how we would investigate should a complaint come to us. Gives us guidance on that as well. That answer your question? You're very welcome.
Thank you. Any other Board members have questions? Yes, Commissioner Andriola.
I am not sure I have a question, but I really appreciate showing the differences and highlighting what the changes are, and also, you know, really having a mirror for all commissioners to follow for every single person that works here. But I really was moved by the quality public service statement. I think the fact that it says the county exists to serve the public, and we put the needs and expectations of citizens at the center of everything we do, and take pride in delivering services of the highest quality, because to me, that sums up really the responsibility that we all have for everyone here in Washoe County to uphold. So I really wanted to just share, I think that that's a really important statement. Not that the others don't, you know, carry the same weight, but what we're all here to do is serve, all of us, and the customer is every single resident that's here. And so streamlining things and looking at how we can improve things is an evolving process that we all have to be open, and I think to that point, you re-looking at this, and the evolution of that speaks to updating this. So thank you for putting this all together.
Thank you, Commissioner Andriola.
Any other Board members? Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On is on, there you go. I just wanted to find out if there was some workshops with existing rank and file employees of the county, did they have input in this? Is there, is there any notes or minutes or of any meetings that were held, input from just the rank and file? You know, it's always important, and I think, to have folks that are governed by this agreement to have a tremendous amount of input in this. So can you tell us about that?
We didn't have those type of workshops, but one of the things we did is we did send it to the biggest bargaining unit that we have, which is WCEA. Their leadership took a look at this and didn't have any concerns, and we're actually thankful that we've put this together.
Thank you for that. It's always important to get the leadership of the associations, but I'm talking about rank and file folks that have to work under these conditions. You know, I'm looking at our Commissioner handbook, and I'm looking at that, and I had no involvement in putting that together, no input in doing that. So I think it would be important to get, have some workshops and some information, even some, even some anonymous questionnaires go out to the employees and get some feedback from the employees. Again, under rules that are governing their workplace, they should have some input in how their, how this is implemented. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark.
Okay, any other Board members? Commissioner Garcia?
Thank you, Ms. Hurley. I do not have access to the redline version in the packet unless I'm clicking something. The attachment, I don't see any redlines. So I just wanted to clarify, from the original version, one element of this new updated copy is that we now are including all county commissioners and our appointees.
Yes, to the Chair, Patricia, Patricia Hurley, Human Resources, again, through the Chair, to Commissioner Garcia. Yes, in fact, it reads this, "This policy sets forth Washoe County's expectations of its employees, officials, and any person representing Washoe County in their interactions with the public and each other, and reflects the core values set out in Washoe County's statement of values."
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Great. Commissioner Clark, are you signed back in?
Thank you again, Madam Chair. Again, with, without some workshops or some, in this case, employee involvement instead of community involvement, I don't think I'm going to be able to support these changes until we get some input from the folks that are actually governed by this, up to and including the commissioners. Thank you.
Well, this is your time to give input. What's your input?
My input is exactly that. I would like the folks that are going to be governed by this to be able to go to a workshop and go over this. So that's what I'm asking. If we can put this on hold until we have some input from the folks at, the employees and the commissioners, and not just have the HR department dictate what the new policy might be. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, Commissioner Garcia?
I'm sorry, my iPad's not working.
You're fine.
To sign in. Madam Chair, this originally came forward on February 14, 2023. It was Agenda Item 91 as part of the consent. It was pulled from consent, and we had some discussion here at the diocese. This is before Commissioner Andriola was appointed. And it was just going over the baseline standard for, a standard of conduct for all employees. Clark and Herman motioned to table it. It was a three to two vote, Hartung and Herman, I'm not sure how the vote shook out there, but this has already been tabled a year, over a year. I am really pleased with the updates, and I appreciate your time and effort, and I'd like to move forward, so I'm ready for a motion when you're ready.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for that. Vice Chair Herman?
I'm of the same opinion as I was a year ago. So I will be voting with Commissioner Clark.
Okay. Madam Clark, it looks like we have some public comment. Oh, Commissioner Clark, sorry about that.
Thank you, and I appreciate the fact that Commissioner Garcia brought it up, that this started last February. From last February until now, there was ample opportunity to have some workshops, and if you had intended to bring this back to us, when the commissioners didn't, didn't want to vote on this a year ago, or over a year ago, there was plenty enough time to get some input from the rank and file. I'm always going to stick up for the rank and file employees of this county. Without the people that work at the, at our county, the county's nothing. So they need to have some input in this. Maybe they've got some insight, somebody, if I want to know how a factory runs, I don't want to talk to the management, I want to talk to somebody on the factory floor who actually has to work there, who could probably point out easier and faster and more efficient ways of doing things. So to that point, I want to see this go out as a questionnaire or some workshops held right in this room if we need to, multiple meetings, to get some input from the rank and file. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Andriola?
Well, I guess it affords a question. So is it, when you went to the Washoe County Employees Association Representatives, did they actually solicit any feedback during that time from any of the employees? Or what was the process that they used to address or to solicit information from their membership?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Commissioner Andriola, I don't have the answer to that. Our, the way when we put policies together, we do send them to the WCEA. Whether they sent it out to their membership, I don't know. All I know is I got an okay back to them that they didn't see any issues. Remember, the Code of Conduct does exist as it stands now. This isn't new to them. It is an update, it does add bullying, it further defines who is covered by it. So I'm going to believe that WCEA didn't see that to be an issue, since it's something that exists now. And it also clarified some questions that may have come up from employees when we do have to implement this. So they didn't come back with any questions and seemed okay with it.
So I may have a follow-up.
Yeah, absolutely.
Is there an opportunity to actually solicit feedback? Because there already is, as you pointed out, the body of this is already in place. And is there an opportunity to, if it does move forward, to actually solicit feedback and allow the hard work that everybody's done to be in place? And then if there's any significant changes, that those items can be amended accordingly? Is that a possibility?
Yes, I believe we're going to be taking out an employee survey sometime this year, so it could be something that we could add as a question to see what they think of the Code of Conduct, or if there's any other, like, suggestions you may have, or I can even speak to legal about a way that we can do this, or even reach out to WCEA if they'd be willing to send it to their membership if it gets approved, and if there's any changes that need to occur, or if it doesn't get approved today, because you would like us to do that first. I can do all of those things. I'm waiting for any direction you have, but anything I think is possible, given whatever direction you'd like us to take.
So if it moved forward, because my understanding is the changes are not that significant, they're really updated information, and so if there is anything of question, that actually can be brought back. And so if it were to move forward, we could add an additional condition for that feedback to be solicited. How long approximately would something like that take to get information from employees?
I think we could turn it around really quickly. I could work with WCEA and find out how long they could send it out, give kind of like a period of time for them to come back with anything that they have as they read it, if they have any heartburn or concern about it, and then we can, and then the biggest, of course, hurdle is bring it back here, the time it takes to agendize things and bring those back. But getting feedback and stuff, that doesn't, we can make it as quick as WCE is able to and, and fast.
Was there a reason that it wasn't solicited within that year period of time? Just curious.
When we met in February 14th, there was more questions surrounding the training.
Commissioner Clark?
I didn't get the feedback that he wanted to, you know, that he wanted us to solicit the individuals well, and if I missed that, I apologize to you, Commissioner Clark, I didn't get that. He did ask, you know, he did bring up that there was not an, he didn't feel there was a need from it, from people that he talked to, to make those changes, and so that was the feedback that I had heard. I did, at that time, also tell everybody that WCEA did take a look at this and had no concerns, as it is already, like I said, a policy that does exist. So if I missed that part, that wasn't a direction that I had caught at that time when this came in February. So if I missed that, I do apologize for that.
I do think that there's a big statement in terms of the body that vetted this and cleared this actually represents the employees here, and I think that that's an important distinction to add to it, that if it was vetted and they didn't see anything, and they're the very body that represents the employees that are here.
Correct.
And so if they had any concerns, that certainly would have been, I'm sure, discussed and then vetted out. So for me, there's comfort in knowing that they represent the employees and they put the employees first, and they have vetted this, and it's been sitting or going through the process for a year. But I do, I think there would be a responsibility that we would add the feedback from the employees. Just gonna end it there. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Commissioner Andriola. Commissioner Garcia, were you signed in, or?
I was just going to address the feedback we got last year when the item was tabled, and it was surrounding the training aspect, not so much the survey. So I have a clarifying question, I guess. Would we be able to move forward with the proposed motion as stated today, and then add an element that says we will integrate a question on the upcoming WCEA survey? What's the timeline for that?
I would have to go with WCEA. I mean, I guess this is going to be new for him, so I'd love, you know, I'd have to get ahold of Justin to see how long he could take.
To solicit the feedback and response to the new language in the Code of Conduct.
Sure. And DA Edwards, what do you think? Are we okay to do that today?
Yeah, I think there's a, there's an elephant in the room here in terms of HR going directly to all the employees. I don't, I actually think they did it correctly by going through WCEA, because they can't, I'm not opining that this is the case, but I'm just, as I'm thinking about it right now, we're going to have to figure out, you know, what is the threshold for being able to do that directly with the employees? Is this a matter of wages, hours, and other compens, other conditions of employment, or is this a managerial prerogative? I'm not giving an opinion one way or the other on that right now, but going through the union was the right way to do it, and it, and it removes any risk that, that, of a claim that you're trying to negotiate around the union. So that's a significant factor here as well. If you do move forward today with, like, direction to HR to, you know, arrange, or pit, to pose it to the union to seek input from their rank and file if they, if they want to do that, you know, that was something you guys could do today. But a direction just to go solicit the feedback directly, I don't recommend.
Thank you.
And just to clarify a little bit too, when we put other policies in place too, it's the same process we follow. We send it to the leadership of the WCEA, they come back with any feedback or anything that they think could be pivotal, and so we follow the same on this as well.
Great. Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As Ms. Hurley pointed out, it takes a long time to get something back on the agenda. Believe me, I'm very familiar with that. But that being said, we should think twice and cut once, you know? It's been over a year since it's been on the agenda. Has there been any dramatic increase in bullying or anything that needed to be addressed in this last year? What's, has anything changed? What's, why does it have to yet again happen today? Has anything changed? And I'll have some follow-up questions that you can think of dramatically or insignificantly.
That's Patricia Hurley, Human Resources, you know, that's a tough question. With any type of things that happen with employees and stuff, there's, there's waves that do occur, and an understanding of how things may impact them. I can, you know, so has there been a dramatic increase? Again, it comes in waves. I couldn't, it, any type of employee issues just occur as they occur. So I can't, I'm not saying that people are coming back demanding that the Code of Conduct be better for that, so that they can have a better understanding of it. I'm not, if you're asking that direct question, I'm not hearing that, but I, I do think if you look around and you see what's kind of happening in our environment, and, and then maybe this will get me in trouble saying this too, but if you look at what's happening at the Board, I mean, the kind of the discourse you're seeing that's occurring, people coming to me feeling the inability to maybe speak up if they feel they've not been treated well by an elected official, or if they're not treating each other well, I mean, that is the most honest answer I can give you. There's no real way for somebody to feel like they can be heard, and I've been hearing some of those kind of concerns. I think if you look around the Board and you look at the audience now, look at the staff members that are here. Oh, wait, there isn't hardly any staff members left that come to these Board meetings anymore. So I'm, you know, again, that might have been dangerous for me to answer that question, but I like to be honest with you, Commissioner Clark. I do think, given what we see in the environment, and I think when people come to Human Resources, the helplessness that we feel, maybe even WCEA may feel if they get any of these type of concerns, with the inability for them to be able to address some of their concerns, because I don't have the power or the ability or a forum or a way to investigate should an ele, an official or any person representing the county should misbehave.
It's a tool for HR.
It is a tool.
And I've been hearing from staff members that even our appointees have been out of line with, and even though they're volunteers, they have to treat our staff with respect. And so sadly, I think this is essential to put in writing, so people know how we need to treat each other, and regardless of how you come into the county, a staff member, an appointee, an elected official, we all have the same standards. So Commissioner Clark, do you have additional questions?
Yes, I do. So again, I like it when you're brave. I'm good, I'm glad I just said it. I mean, if anybody understands bullying around here, I think I'll match my bona fides with anybody on this. So, you know, this is an, this is the boogeyman again, you know? Unless there's been any dramatic, real reason, I mean, I'm looking at something here from Alexandra Wilson, telling me that the ROV, whenever we talk about death threats and, and all this stuff, that the boogeyman, the people are quitting because they've had death threats. I've got a document right here that says there is no documented death threats or threats. So which one is it? Is it the boogeyman, people are worried about working here? Isn't there enough protection already in place? Again, I wanted to, if we're going to actually change this, I'd like to see some input from the actual workers, not the management of the workers, and that's the association, to see what the workers think in their own words, what they think might need to be changed on this. So again, I'm not going to be able to support this the way it is until we have more input, and, and you're right. Last February, I was only here for a couple of months, so I asked about one thing, and then, and since that time, I've had other thoughts about this, and I'd like to see some input from employees. Corn Fairy comes to mind when I see that Corn Fairy, the, the rank and file workers here, didn't feel that was fair, and I get lots of calls and emails, and I've shared this stuff with people, and we didn't listen to the workers then, and it sounds like we're not going to listen to workers now. And so I'm not going to be able to support this until we have some more information. I'm surprised the progressive wing of this body isn't also lining up with the workforce and trying to get some, maybe I'm dead wrong, but I don't know that. Let's hear, let's hear from the people who are actually going to be working under these conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark.
Great. Now, Madam Clerk, I see we have some public comment.
We do. First up, we have Penny Brock, followed by Valerie Fianaca.
Penny Brock, for the record, when I saw this on the agenda, I didn't see a DA's opinion, and I think it's very important in this environment that we get an opinion from the DA. I mean, there's things in here like bullying and fairness. What does that mean? Anybody can make a charge. What does this all mean? So I think a DA's opinion is very important. The other thing that's greatly concerning to me is that you're including the county commissioners, our elected bodies, in this. What I've found is they are governed by the NRS under the Ethics Commission. I don't know why the commissioners should be included in this Code of Conduct. I see that as a possible ethics violation. So should you pass this, I will probably file an ethics violation with those that voted to pass this at this time. So I would ask you to table it and do what Commissioner Clark and Commissioner Herman are asking. The other thing that I've found is the NACO handbook. In the NACO handbook, it lays out, it's not in the NRS, so I had to go to the NACO handbook. It gives what are the responsibilities of county commissioners. Nowhere in the list did I find you are to oversee the Code of Conduct. That is to be done by the HR department for the employees. So I would ask you to think carefully before you pass this, because there's, there are, as Commissioner Clark keeps pointing out, some serious questions about revising this Code of Conduct. Thank you.
Thank you.
Valerie Fianaca, followed by Val White.
Valerie Fianaca, for the record. Thank you, Penny. That was enlightening. Bullying is a very subjective term, and the Left has taken it up heartily lately, and I have a problem with it. We were bullied today for 40 minutes while we waited for you to get a photo up with the President. We sat here, 50 people sat here and waited for you to get a photo. Too bad we, the employers, we, the employers, can't send county employees for training. We witnessed some real dysfunction on this Board today. Let's talk about integrity too, since that's brought up in all this. Only one county commissioner asked me for a thumb drive of 3,400 emails that would prove to all of you that we have a very dysfunctional library system. We have employees that all need to go for training. Every single one that's in those emails needs to go for training, and I'm not lying to you. You can get the proof from me if you want it. Quality public service, that was another point that was brought up. If I were sending anybody for training, I could tell you who I'd send for training today, because quality public service does not mean that you wait, you make your employers wait 40 minutes on you while you get a campaign photo. It's becoming really obvious that this Board, along with others in our community, are becoming almost as dysfunctional as the school Board, and for that matter, our federal government. And I don't even know the answer to that. I wish I could give you a magic wand and tell you what the answer to that is, but I don't know what it is. I think it's just part of where we are right now. I don't think we need to settle for it, though. I don't think we need to settle for it at all. I think we could talk to each other with a little bit more respect, all of us, and you guys need to lead the way, because you have authority. We don't have any, I wish we had authority. Actually, we do have authority. We get to vote. Thank God we get to vote still. Maybe we get to vote.
Val White?
Fear is a horrible thing, and nightmares aren't fun. Imaginations often run wild in the minds of paranoid people. That's also frequently experienced of people with a guilty conscience or a mental disorder. One commissioner on the diocese has expressed fear for multiple reasons... One commissioner on the diocese has expressed fear for multiple reasons and multiple times. I absolutely hate seeing anyone suffering, so my suggestion to this commissioner is to resign. Some people just don't have the disposition to handle grown-up conversations or the weight of representation.
Can you please address the full board on this topic?
I'm addressing the whole board. Stop interrupting me. Not your right. Instead, the commissioner seeks special treatment because of her paranoid feelings and imaginings.
No, I asked you, please, address the full board.
I would suggest counseling and at the very minimum filing police reports.
No, Ms. White, this is not appropriate.
With evidence to substantiate her claims, and she won't resign.
This is, I, I would just say, this is, does not appear to be on topic, is what I would say.
This is on topic. It has to do, it has to do.
Okay, I want to hear your thoughts on the code of conduct.
I want my time back for your interruption. She needs to submit police reports.
What, what do you want to do on the code of contact, Ms. White, code of conduct, Ms. White?
I want 20 seconds back for your interruptions, and the code of conduct should not be passed because it is denying the free speech of the employees. Because what it's doing is it's instilling a, uh, environment of fear. Don't open your mouth because you're going to hurt somebody's feelings. You're going to make them scared. There's freedom deniers up here, and you're doing it through this code of conduct refining. It's a pattern that you guys have developed, denying free speech because it's scaring someone, because it's not following your definition of respect. Respect is, is a subjective term. Feelings are not facts, and feelings of being scared could be attributable to various things, as I mentioned, mental disorders, guilty conscience. So this code of conduct, Mr. Edwards, should not be refined at this point. As Mr. Clark has said, where are the people? Where's their input for this code of conduct that is going to impact their speech, their behavior greatly? It's just a pattern. Freedom deniers, and that includes anybody who votes along with the left extreme progressive element on this board. Your constituents have had enough of your freedom denying. This code of conduct is going to limit how the public and constituents can interact with anybody in the county, because their feelings might be hurt. I eagerly await the day when several of you are gone off of this diet.
There's nobody else signed in.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, I bring it back to the board. Are there any other comments? Commissioner Garcia had said she wanted to make a motion, but I'm looking to see if there's any other comments from the board. Commissioner Andrea?
I just want to reiterate that there already is a code of conduct in place, and the changes are not significant, and that the representation of the entire employees here have been represented in terms of at least vetting that, and that the process that is, um, that was followed with this is the same process would be for any other HR policy. So I'm just making sure I understand that all of those statements that I just made are correct.
Patricia Hurley, HR, for the record, you are correct, Commissioner Andrea. It is not, we have not deviated from the process. One thing I do want to clear up, because a question came up whether this was vetted by legal. It absolutely was. So I just want everybody to know. Legal looked at this not once, twice, but three times.
And that, to confirm the Assistant DA Edwards' point of the caution of going directly to employees, that in fact, the process that you followed ensured that those employees were truly represented, and there was no breach of compliance.
That is correct.
So, um, still allowing the contingency of including the possibility with the motion to have the, um, the union, the employee union for Washoe County employees, look at sending out this so that they can solicit feedback that they would compile, that they would give to you. That would be the proper process?
Patricia Hurley, HR, for the record. What would happen is if this gets passed today, I would make sure that the President of WCEA receives this policy. I would then ask if you'd be willing to go ahead and share it with his body, which he would probably do anyways. I can't speak for Justin Norton, but I would ask that he do that. And I'm going to guess that any concerns or anything that they may have or clarifications they may need, WCE and I have a pretty good relationship. They would come back and share those with us, and we can see if we can work together if there's anything major that needs to be changed.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to confirm that I understood everything correctly. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Commissioner Andrea, and to that point, I know you had discussed that there will be different trainings on this. Maybe, um, make sure that that information gets to WCEA if there's follow-up questions on the training piece. Commissioner Clark, did you have anything else, or you're good? Okay, any other, yes, Commissioner Garcia, go ahead.
I move to approve the updated Washoe County Code of Conduct, which lists expectations of officers and employees in their interactions with the public and each other.
Second.
May I, uh, may I ask for the contingency?
Yes, yes, go ahead. And under discussion?
Yes, would, would you be amenable to amending your motion to include reaching out to the employees' union to actually get a read for the employees?
Yes, I would.
Okay, with the amended motion and a second, any discussions or questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. There it is. Okay, the motion passes 3-2. Thank you so much. We are now going to move to item 19, Mr. Manager.
Item 19 is an introduction in first reading of an ordinance pursuant to NRS 278 dot 0201 through 278 dot 0207, approving a development agreement between Washoe County and North Pyramid Investors LLC for Blue Oaks, a residential subdivision, tentative subdivision map case number WTM 19 dash 003. The purpose of the development agreement is to extend the deadline for recording the first final map from January 7th, 2024 to January 7th, 2026, and to adopt amended conditions of approval, excuse me, WAC 24 dash 0001. The project is located along Campo Rico Lane east of Pyramid Highway. The project encompasses a total of approximately 9.88 acres, and the total number of residential lots allowed by the tentative map is 10. The parcels are located within the Spanish Springs Planning Area in Washoe County Commission District Number 4. That's APN 534 dash 600 dash 23. And if approved, schedule a public hearing with second reading and possible adoption of the ordinance for April 23rd, 2024, and authorization for the Chair to execute the designated agreement.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Manager. And I'm looking to the board, do we need a staff presentation? It looks like we have someone here to present. If we do?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
This is Bill Number 1906.
Thank you so much, and I missed that, 1906. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, yes, Vice Chair Herman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just curious, if Sparks is providing their water and sewer, or?
Cat Oakley, Washoe County Planning. It is my understanding that they are, you'll see in the staff report, that one of the delaying factors that requires this extension of time is that there was an interlocal agreement that needed to be updated between Washoe County and Sparks that was updated. And so, um, for that reason, the project will be moving forward with, with that sewer service.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions by board members? We do have public comments, so, Madam Clerk.
Janet Butcher.
Janet Butcher, for the record, please enter my comments into minutes, verbatim, please. Any, anytime I see anything having to do with Pyramid Highway, off of Pyramid Highway, as I was speeding up Pyramid yesterday at seven miles an hour, um, I, I don't know if this residential subdivision means it's going to be another obnoxious apartment complex, or if it's just going to be individual, um, uh, homes or whatever, but I just really want you guys to start thinking about, you put the cart before the horse, and we need to get that, that Pyramid figured out. It's a mess, and we keep building and building and building and building. And those apartment complexes, as I was speeding at seven miles an hour, they're not even full yet. I hate to think of what it's going to be like then. Growth is good, but we've got, we've got to do the infrastructure before we, before we go full speed ahead. Um, and I know some of you vote yes up there, and you don't live in that area, you don't know what it's like. It's frustrating as all get out. Last week, I saw three accidents because of the construction. It's just a shame. Thanks.
Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. If there's no other board comments or questions, this is, needs to be read into the record, and it's, um, Bill Number 1906. So I'm looking for someone to do that. Commissioner Andrea?
Madam Chair, I move to introduce Bill Number 1906, and set the public hearing in second reading of the ordinance for possible adoption during the meeting of April 23rd, 2024.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. We will now move into our public hearings. We are going to start with item 20, Mr. Manager.
Item 20 is a public, is an appeal of the Washoe County Planning Commission's denial of Master Plan Amendment Number WMPA 23 dash 0008 and Regulatory Zone Amendment Case Number WRZA 23 dash 0009, the Thompson Family Trust, which seeks to amend the Southwest Trucking Meadows Area Plan, a component of the Washoe County Master Plan, to redesignate 8.36 acres of two parcels, including 81.83 acres, APN 0441 dash 650 dash 04, and 041 dash 651, 650 dash 05, from rural to suburban residential, which seeks to amend the Southwest Trucking Meadows Regulatory Zone map to redesignate 8.36 acres of the same parcels from general rural, which is one dwelling unit per 40 acres, to low-density suburban, which is one dwelling unit per acre. The appellant and appellate and applicant is David Thompson. The project parcel, the subject parcels are located southeast of the intersection of Hunter's Peak Road and Hunter Falls Circle within the Southwest Trucking Meadows Area Plan, have a master plan designation of rural and a regulatory zone designation of general rural. The Board of County Commissioners shall consider the appeal based on the record on appeal and any additional evidence submitted to the Board's public hearing. The Board may affirm the Planning Commission's decision as recommended by staff, or may reverse the Planning Commission's decision. If the Board reverses the Planning Commission's decision and adopts the proposed amendments, then the Board shall also consider approving a resolution to sponsor an amendment to the 2019 Trucking Meadows Regional Plan to change the land designation of the one, of the 8.36 acres of APN 041 dash 650 dash 04, and 041 dash 650 dash 05, included in Master Plan Amendment WMPA 823 0008, from Tier 3 to Tier 2. The county's addition of proposed, of the proposed master plan and regulatory zone amendments would only take effect after a determination that the master plan amendment conforms with the Trucking Meadows Regional Plan by the regional planning authorities. If adopted, the Board must authorize the Chair to sign the resolutions to this effect.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. So we'll start with a staff presentation, and then we'll have the appellant come up and give a presentation, and then we will take public comment and make some, have some deliberation. So go ahead.
Cat Oakley, Washoe County Planning. This is an appeal of the Thompson Family Trust's request to, for a master plan and regulatory zone amendment. Here is the subject site. You can see it's in the foothills in southwest Reno, kind of on the fringes of existing suburban development in Washoe County and in the city of Reno. On this overhead, you can see it's, it's in a hilly area, not a lot of vegetation on most of the parcel. The requests are specifically to redesignate 8.36 acres on two parcels, which total 81.83 acres, from rural to suburban residential for the master plan designation, and then from general rural to low-density suburban for the zoning district. And that is from a density of one dwelling unit per 40 acres to one dwelling unit per acre. The parcels are both currently undeveloped. The majority of them are composed of slopes over 30%, and the overall increase in density would be from two total units to nine units. Here is a side-by-side map showing where that zoning change and master plan change would be. It's on the northern end of both parcels adjoining the adjacent development to the north there. Here it is for the regulatory zone. Some background on the appeal. The Planning Commission unanimously denied both requests on January 2nd, 2024. This was in line with staff's recommendation to deny these requests. And then on January 17th, 2024, the applicant, David Thompson, filed an appeal. In the appeal, the reason alleged for the appeal was that there is not substantial evidence to support this denial, and that the Planning Commission therefore abused its discretion in denying these applications. Going to walk through just the main reasons and reasoning behind the Planning Commission's denial of these requests. They have to do largely with two of these findings that are for both the Master Plan Amendment and the Regulatory Zone Amendment. First, consistency with the master plan, and then availability of facilities. They in fact couldn't make most of these findings, but these two highlight the main issues with this request. There are significant development constraints on the properties as a whole, but specifically in the area where there is the request to change the master plan and regulatory zone designation. There are slopes steeper than 30% on 64% of the properties, but you can see those areas in red are steeper than 30%, and the blue lines indicate the extent of the requested zone and master plan change, and it is also in those areas that are requested to change. They in fact compose about 25% or 2.1% of the proposed low-density suburban area, which accounts for two of the seven additional dwelling units requested. So it is a significant component of the applicant's request. The development constraints area is recognized in the Washoe County Master Plan and in the Development Code, and is, includes slopes steeper than 30% and other developmentally constrained areas, and specifically states in our master plan, in the regional plan, that they are appropriate for a maximum residential density of one unit per 40 acres, which is what they are zoned currently. Both the master plan and the Development Code and Article 424 for Hillside Development are quite explicitly clear that slopes steeper than 30% are not suitable for development. This is also aligned with the fact that the DCA is indicated to be only appropriate for densities of one unit per 40 acre, which is included in the intent of general rural, which of course has that residential density. Staff's, one of staff's big concerns about this request has to do with those development constraints with very steep slopes in the area that is requested for a zoning increase in density, and, and granting that request would be inconsistent with zoning throughout Washoe County, because this stance that slopes steeper than 30% are appropriate for one dwelling unit per 40 acres in terms of the zoning designation is consistent with our practice throughout the county. It's what our, our codes and our policies state. The Engineering Division also recommends- The Engineering Division also recommended denial based on site characteristics and concerns about developing at the requested density on those steep slopes. For that reason, the MPA and RZA finding of consistency with the master plan and some of the other findings as well can't be made due to the encroachment into these steep areas. Part of the intent of a master plan and the zoning is that it's a tool to articulate how future land use will be and how it should be. And so really, the, the reason that finding is important is because it wouldn't be appropriate to change that designation or that zoning district for lands that are not physically suitable for the density of development that is being requested, and that is the case in this request. The second big concern had to do with availability of facilities. Water and wastewater facilities do not currently extend to the project site. There is a development to the north, ridges at Hunter Creek, that if completed will extend facilities closer to the project site. However, those facilities don't exist now, and as the Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency pointed out in our conversations with them and in their, their review memo, is even if those improvements are created by ridges at Hunter Creek, even if that development is completed, that doesn't mean that those facilities will be adequately sized to accommodate this new development. So there are not facilities in this area, they're not planned by Washoe County to be extended there, and for that reason, staff and the Planning Commission could not make the finding that facilities are available and adequate or planned to be adequate. Overall, the Planning Commission was unable to make the highlighted four findings for the master plan amendment, consistency with the master plan, response to change conditions, availability of facilities, and desired pattern of growth, and they could not make the highlighted five findings for the regulatory zone amendment, which are generally very similar to the master plan findings. And for that reason, the Planning Commission denied both requests. The Board has two potential options today. First, to deny the appeal and affirm the Planning Commission's decision to deny the master plan and regulatory zone amendment requests. And secondly, to grant the appeal and reverse that decision to thereby approve the master plan and regulatory zone amendment requests. I am happy to answer any questions, and a representative for engineering is also here to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for staff before the appellant comes up? Commissioner Vice Chair Herman?
Hi, hi. Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and thank you for presenting. This really intrigues me, this plan, because it's very creative. Took all that acreage in order to find somewhere on that property. I really have to commend the engineer on that. So I'm going to listen to the rest of this and, and, but, and then, like you say, the utilities are uncertain, but if he's that creative with this, something will come apart. It's just, it's just kind of interesting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board members have comments before the appellant? Okay. Thank you very much. Come on up.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Commissioners. My name's John Krompottic. I'm going to introduce Mr. David Thompson. He's my client, the applicant, the owner. He's representing as the primary investor in this property with a lot of effort, a lot of financial investment. He wants to have a few minutes with the commission. Thank you.
Come on up.
Thank you for your time. I have, I'm 80 years old. My wife is 70. I want to get all my affairs in shape before they plant me in the ground, so this is one of the steps that I'm taking right now, so that my wife doesn't have to have the pressure of trying to go through this, and I want to get it all settled. I've lived in Nevada since 1966, probably before a lot of you were born, and I love Nevada. As soon as I came to Reno, I loved it. I loved the outdoors, orientation, I loved the mountains, the people were all nice and friendly. To me, it was just great, and I, aside from my service in the Army for three years, I've lived here ever since that time, and have, and I've never regretted a second of it. I brought my family up here, they've gone to great schools. My son, who is Michael Thompson, passed away when he was 20. He was the president of Reno High in 1988, so some of you might have gone to high school with him. And, and so I, that's the reason for the naming. So, the, 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 the.
Clerk, can we put up the screen? You can put that down, sir, and we can put up the screen. If you want to just put it down and we can, yes, sir. Thank you. There we go.
So, we put up the signage for the trailhead out there. I spent a lot of money on this out of my own pocket. I donated it to the county and the citizens of the county. I put in a nice parking area there, so that people could come there and enjoy it. There's also provided restrooms for the people that were, were hiking there, and I also coordinated with the Forest Service to connect the trails to their trails, so that I could, so that the hikers could hike up. If you go 45 minutes up the trail, there's a beautiful waterfall, and so many citizens of this county have used it, and perhaps a lot of you, and perhaps a lot of people that are in the audience. So, that's all my, you know, so that's a background on this project. And I'll have John fill you in on the details of the, we have a small project going on out there, and John can give you the details of that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm going to go through the PowerPoint that I submitted to staff last week. I'm, some of this, of course, is always redundant to staff, so bear with me here. That was articulated well, the request as from Cat. So there's the site, Michael D. Thompson Trailhead in relation to the subject 81-acre site. It's actually 81.8 acres. When I talk about 10%, bear with me, it's very close to 10% of the 81 acres that we are proposing for the suburban residential and the LDS, respectively, in the master plan and the zoning. So you can see there, when you toggle, there's the 8.45 acre footprint in relation to the 81 acre site. Eagles Nest to the east, it's an important note because the proximity of the project, in addition to the ridges to the north, you can see the mapping of the lots, so those are final map, they have not been constructed. And of course, we are piggybacking on them as also articulated by staff. Oops, wrong direction. Just a note to share with the commission, the, the process of which we go by now with the hub process, the applicant-developer-hosted neighborhood meeting we had, that's the list provided by staff. I note in red, two people attended, one was the Collin Ranch HOA manager, the other was a resident of Eagles Nest, they had some concerns, they had questions. We addressed all their questions, never heard from them since, that was back in October. A different view of the zoning being proposed and in relation to existing zoning, there is existing, and there's the proposed, the LDS. What's important about that, from my standpoint, doing this for many years, is to be credible, we're actually adjoined to the, to the zoning. Why is that important? Because you talk about leapfrog zoning, no such pattern of zoning is proposed here. It's adjacent, joined at the hip with existing zoning on that 8.3, I said 8.4, 8.3 acre portion, and then of course, the 90% going up the hill on the back that would remain in open space. Similarly, identical footprint in the master plan, you can see existing today GR, excuse me, R in the master plan, and suburban res, as we propose it there, the same 8.3 acres. This map, so we have the approved footprint of the ridges phase two, that's the 50-some-odd lots. You can see our seven lots that are adjacent to it. And, you know, why do we do this? It's because you want it to look natural to the eye, the form of development as an extension of an existing approved subdivision with identical lot sizing as a minimum. That was the idea, and then everything behind it would be open space, as I mentioned. This is a little bit technical, I hate these kind of yucky maps, but it's so important to the discussion, because most of what staff talked about was 30% slope. So what we did is compared our slope to the approved ridges to the north, and you will see that there are about 16 lots that have some red in the approved ridges project. We have red in each of ours. That is the 30% slope. Our math is not in line with staff, and I really appreciate staff and their effort in this and doing what they believe is the right thing, but we're really talking about one-half of 1% of the entire site. You know, when you whittle it down to eight acres, and then, and then the red that we're carving out, or with every measure we could, I think it would be best served in the tentative map process, there's less than 1% of red in the actual development area. I make a point, it's my judgment, and I feel very strongly and confident in saying that in the first bullet point, nearly impossible to have lots in rolling terrain, hillside terrain, without 30%. You got these convenient slope cells of which we deal with in this planning process, you can see them, you know, the gradations of green there, yellow, orange, and red. Mother Nature didn't deliver earth that way, so they don't always line up. And you have these tidbits of red, and you deal with them responsibly, and I think we've done a really, really conscientious job in managing the red on the proposed zoning of these seven lots. I have suggested to staff, to the Planning Commission, to some of you individually, that we will do anything to create this non-disturbance zone, no build and no disturbance. So the red is in the lotting area but not eligible for development. Or grading, or landscaping. It sits in the back of the lots and would just be there. Here's how we do that. This is an easier map to read, and it's so important to the process, to the integrity of the process, and that is, what we're really dealing with is 30%. So we did 25-foot, 2,500 square foot footprints, one through seven there. Those are scaled in there with our civil engineering team. Two stories, because they would be sloped, you know, built, hillside architecture that's built into the slopes, so that reduces grading, and it results in about 5,000 square foot homes in that footprint. And you notice how minimal the disturbance is to the red. It's an integrity way of dealing with the constraints that we have in the code and the public policy in this process. This, by the way, I think in my many years, I've never done this level of detail. We're getting into engineering detail in a zoning process, because staff was so diligent, respectfully so, in trying to guard against any encroachment into the 30%. This is an interesting map. This is, again, not opinion, this is fact. This is perhaps the best development successfully done we've seen in the region, in a different time. I don't know what the development codes were, but I'm talking about practically speaking now, that when you have 30% slope, this is Eagles Nest adjacent to the project, joined at the project at a tip, and look at all the red in those lots. That's not an opinion, that's exactly from the slope analysis map that says it happens. And what we do is put a house near the front with a driveway close to the house in these slope-constrained lots, and, and, and you do have 30%, and it creates magnificent views and magnificent three-dimensional stuff going on when you put a house on these. But there's basically 30% slope on every one of those lots. This is the development constraints map, of which staff shared as well, a different view. This is not our map, this is our footprint overlaid to the regional planning map. And you see the tiny encroachment, if you can recall the prior maps I shared, very much in keeping with the prior maps, all about the 30%, different color scheme, and you can see a lot of the 30% that happens to be spattered throughout the approved and built development to the north and to the east. This is done by an architect, I wanted to, this is the, you know, the simplest tool that I know of, that we do in this profession, to show a house from a grading plan, from an approved, from the street as it's designed. This is on Lot 7, let me go back there so you can imagine this. Does this pointer work, Cat? No? It's that one closest to, the Lot 7 is the one closest, shared property line with the adjacent. So if you imagine striking a line through there, and from the elevation of the road, putting the house where we showed it on that, on that footprint, this is what you get. And the point being is that we've concentrated development all at the front, the 90% open space is in the back. We have different math and staff, I think they're looking at this pure zoning. I'm, I'm here to promise you that we're looking for seven lots as proposed in this footprint. Okay? So that's our seven lots. They said because there's the remainder in the back, that's, that's nine. We're not asking for nine. We're asking for seven zoning, been forthright in every step of the process in trying to manage it as such. A few things that I'd need to share as well. Staff is calling it development. This is pre-development. This is colors on a map that we're asking for. It's very important, because look at the level of detail we've gone through. The fact is that we're rezoning 10% of the site. It's not a development proposal yet. Our civil engineer asked him to be here today, he says, John, this is ridiculous for him. He's, he doesn't do zoning stuff. And he says, you're asking me to get engaged in a zoning process, and we're talking about engineering? He says, of course, if we don't meet Article 436 and 438, the development code, streets, grading, right, those are the elements, there is no project. And we're confident, I'm confident, I'm confident, working with a man who's a 25-year civil engineer in land development, seeing, of course, I'll make it work. And if the grading doesn't work at that time, there's no project. It has to be, no exceptions. I believe the single biggest point in the approach is the minimal environmental disturbance. A lot of times when you get into nice perimeter peripheral terrain like this, we, we have a form of development that sits at the bottom of the hills I mentioned, not the side of a hill, right next to the road, grading restrictions, lack of presence of significant botany, of wildlife, of trees, none of that is present where we're putting those lots at the front. That's the nuance of doing what we do on the creative side, and you have to make it work. Make it work to the eye, make it work to the neighborhood. I think it's entirely mistaken for staff to call it development of 30% slope by the math that we proposed, the footprint mapping and the constraint, or the commitment to do the D restriction, whatever it takes to say it goes exactly as we've shown in the zoning process. And as far as facility planning goes, I've never done this level for a zoning effort, not one time in 25 years. So we're obviously not aligned, and what I mean by that is I got a water discovery report, seven lots is rounding air in the context of the consumption of water used from a water tank. It's rounding air, doesn't even count. We put 4, 5, 600, 1,000 lots that are served by one tank. We're talking about seven that will be shared on the tank of which Mr. Thompson launched many years ago. And yes, if the ridges doesn't go to the north, there is no project. We're in a planning space, right? There is, we, we, we should be all in alignment with that concept, that that would have to be done, we're using the same roadway infrastructure, the same water, and, and the same sewer system. We're using the same roadway infrastructure, the same water, and, and the same sewer system. So that's basically, that's basically all I'll have. I'll leave the rest for any comments or questions you have, commissioners. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Looking to the board to see if there's any questions for staff or the appellant at this point. And I don't see anyone signed in. Commissioner Andrea.
I have a question for staff. So I know that the ridges, it appears that the ridges has already been approved in terms of it's not been developed, but that zoning has been approved. And if they decide to move forward, then they'll go through the process that they need to follow. Is that a correct?
Cat Oakley, Washoe County Planning. That is correct, that the ridges tentative map has been approved. And if this project, that's the zoning for which is under consideration today, moves forward, they would too be required to go through a tentative map process.
So if there was an agreement based on the presentation by the appellant to adhere to not building on the not, the 30% slope, if you will, and, and preserving that as a non-disturbance area, is that something that you would consider amenable?
It's planning's perspective that zoning is the appropriate tool to articulate where certain densities of development should and should not go. And it's, that really is the purpose of that tool. And that's why it's very clear in our policies that the denser areas, for example, one unit per acre, are only appropriate for slopes less than 30%. If this did move forward, of course, we would try to continue to apply code and policies to limit and mitigate development on those parcels. But really, in terms of planning, master planning and zoning policy, the request to have the residential density for those steeper areas that isn't appropriate for them is what is concerning.
But the contingency then, if it were to be included in the approval, if it does happen, would actually prevent a concern in the sense of preserving that policy of not building within the 30%. So it is a little bit semantics, and I served on the planning commission for years, so I, I understand adhering to it. But the reality is, is that if you look, and I know you have, you probably could draw this in your sleep, but the 30% slope and the areas in the ridges that, that adjoins to it has the same similar pattern in the sense of what those lots have been designated in various ways. So to have a contingency of not building in the 30% slope would help preserve that, that policy and not allow any building to happen within that condition.
I would say two things about that. First is that while some of the lots in the ridges development do include slopes deeper than 30%, those areas are not zoned denser than one residential unit per 40 acres. The lot includes them, but the zoning does not reflect that higher density, which is why staff has stated that not allowing that higher density in those steeper areas would be consistent with our previous practice. And then secondly, that in the assurance from them about not building on those areas right now is a promise. And the, without using zoning as a tool to ensure that, there, there's no guarantee that it would occur that way. I'm acknowledging that they are adamant that it would, right? But the, the zoning and master plan changes are not conditional. Once it is granted, it is granted, and they have that residential density on those portions of the parcel.
But they'd have to get a tentative map, sorry.
Yeah, I was just going to mention that. That's, I guess, planners, huh? They would still have to go through to get a tentative map, and they would still have to go to the regional planning. This is, if you will, the, a beginning step of a huge process that would continue, that they would have to continue before ever even moving dirt. So that's kind of my, my take on it is there's, there are these levels of, of authority and the process would then take them through those steps. And I think having it in writing and having it noted and having that condition because, again, I, I don't want to take up more time in the meeting. But the reality is, is that some of the slopes are 30% within those areas that are, are next to that adjoining development. So each one of these, in my opinion, has those steps to ensure that the process will be followed and that at any point outside of this body, it could stop for whatever reason. So I just, again, I don't, I know you all know that, but I just wanted to put that on the record. This isn't that if this does get approved as an example, that it would automatically, they would, you know, start moving dirt. It's just, there's, there's a lot of work that has to go that follows this.
Mr. Lloyd, did you have something?
Just wanted to make one clarification, the request before you. Although there is a conceptual drawing that the applicant showed, the request is not for seven units, it's for nine units total. I wanted to make that clarification to the board.
Because of how the math works with the, yeah. DA Edwards.
I'm just going to add this into the record, too. You can't condition zoning and master plan approvals. They either get them or they don't. You can condition projects, but not these designations.
Thank you for that. Looking to other commissioners. And I'm not seeing anyone else who wants to speak up. Vice Chair, are you wanting to say anything? Reading your body language.
I know. Thank you, Madam Chair. This is such an early stage, but it's kind of a brave step. And I feel that after listening to the owner of the property, that I see his reasoning behind asking for this right now. And I think, I think it's just part of a beautiful dream and it can come true. So it's the beginning and I, I feel like we could all be helping and just make this happen.
And on your point, Vice Chair Herman, I can meet the findings. I'm having a hard time not meeting the findings for both the master plan, the regulatory zone map. So, and any other board members? Commissioner Garcia, are you signed in? No. Commissioner Clark, do you have anything?
No.
Okay. With that, I'm going to take a stab. If no other board member wants to, I'm happy to. Take a stab to move to grant the appeal to, oh, excuse me, and we don't have, we need public comment.
There is none.
Thank you.
There's nobody signed in.
I didn't think so, but then I, I forgot to say it. So thank you. Move to grant the appeal and reverse the planning commission's decision to deny WMPA 230008, WRZA 230009, Thompson Family Trust, and to adopt the master plan amendment as outlined, and the regulatory zone amendment as outlined in the staff report and further to adopt and authorize the chair to sign the resolution as outlined in the staff report. And yes, and I can meet all the findings for the master plan and the regulatory zone map. Thank you, Commissioner Andrea. Any questions on the motion? Not seeing any. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. Okay, that motion passes. We will now move to item 21. This is also a public hearing.
This will be ordinance number 1713, an ordinance revising the Washoe County requirements and schedules of rates and charges for sanitary sewer service within Washoe County by increasing sanitary sewer connection privilege fees within all service areas. This ordinance amends ordinance number 1615 and was formerly bill number 1903.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. And so we are now on our second reading of this item. Does staff, or does the commission want to see a presentation on this item?
What's the ordinance number?
Is it 1713?
1713.
1713.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Not seeing that folks want another presentation on this, so Madam Clerk, if we can open it up to public comment.
We have Penny Brock signed in.
Penny Brock, for the record, when this came up before, I didn't have my sewer bill with me, but this time I'm prepared. So as you know, we've had inflation, 25% increase at the grocery store. Our property taxes went up last July, they're going up again this July. Fuel has gone up, Nevada energy has gone up, and now they want to raise our sewer bills. So I didn't have time to compare other counties of our size to see what their sewer bills are, but I'm just knowing what's happening in Washoe County. Here's a copy of my sewer bill. For January through March, it was $171.15. Now, this agenda item says that our sewer bills are going to go up almost double, almost double. Think about that. Now, we've got two commissioners that live out in the county, so they're on septic systems, so they have no idea what we in, in the city limits face under these sewer bills. But for people on fixed income, why are they going up so much? If groceries are up 25%, why is this going to go up almost 50%? So I would just ask you to reconsider raising our sewer bills that much. And I know that Janet Butcher mentioned she's keeping track of votes, so that might be something she wants to make a note of, is how you vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And just for clarification, this is connection fees today that we are discussing. But I am looking to the board to see if there's any discussion. Vice Chair Herman, do you have anything?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I didn't punch my button, so I was all confused here.
I'm watching. All good.
So this, I believe, is a necessary thing because this is a developer fee or a builder fee, when, when they hook up to, you know, and so this is a necessary thing because of all the things that the last lady's talked about. And so, and this is to keep the sewer bills down because that's, you know, and maybe it'll slow down some of the stuff that's going on. I worry about the North Valleys having too many hookups and not any place for the remains to go. So I think it's a good idea. So thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We need to do this, we need to pay for the sewer capacity that we're going to need. But everybody needs to understand that whenever you hear the word, "We need affordable housing", take a look at this. This is what keeps affordable housing from being affordable. And that, this isn't going to be paid by the developer. They're not going to say, "I'm going to take a hit on my profit." This is going to be passed on to the buyer of a new property. So it's either going to be passed on to the buyer of a new property in a single-family situation, or it's going to be passed on to the renters in an apartment situation. It's as simple as that. So we've got to do it, but again, when you hear the, the dog whistle sound of affordable housing, remember, this is, this is why we don't have affordable housing, because it costs money to treat the raw sewage. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board members? Not seeing any. Commissioner Andrea.
I always feel compelled to just, again, the reminder of how important it may be, and I'm excited to kind of try and work through the, the regionalization of sewer and wastewater treatment facility, which I've been echoing since being here. And I'm looking forward to that opportunity, whenever it can come before this board, to literally try and create efficiencies. And in the long run, look at saving costs for everyone, including that economic domino effect that happens, especially with construction. So it's a little off topic, but then relevant to this because every jurisdiction has these connection fees, every jurisdiction charges different things, every jurisdiction has billing, different billing departments and admin. And I think looking at the, you know, the regionalization may actually not only give opportunities of, again, saving taxpayer dollars, but looks, look at the long term of, of our water and affluent water and all of the things that go to that point. So long-term, it's a subject that is certainly on the tip of my tongue in terms of working hard to get that done. But I, I am going to support this to all the points that have already been made.
Great, thank you. Any other board members? I'm not seeing any. So at this point, I'm looking for someone to make a motion.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Vice Chair Herman and a second by Commissioner Andrea. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And...
Mr. Garcia?
It disappeared.
Okay. Her computer is really... Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much. And now we are moving to item 22.
Okay, this will be ordinance number 1714. An ordinance amending Washoe County Code Chapter 110 Development Code by modifying various sections in Division III Regulation of Uses and Division IV Development Standards in order to update regulations related to accessory dwelling units, detached accessory structured, manufactured housing, and battery charged fences. These updates includes, include deleting a section specifying the procedure and findings for placing a manufactured home that is less than 1,200 square feet in size, and modifying various sections to allow detached accessory dwelling units as an allowed use by right in certain residential regulatory zones. Require detached accessory dwelling units on parcels one-half an acre in size or smaller to be subject to the administrative review permit process in Article 809. Update the maximum square footage for both attached and detached accessory dwelling units. Define minor accessory dwelling unit. Modify permitting requirements for detached accessory structures. Update the minimum square footage for manufactured homes and add provisions related to battery charged fences as required by Senate Bill 208 in 2023 and all matters necessarily connected therewith and pertaining thereto. It was formerly bill number 1905.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I know we had a thorough presentation on this item previously with the first reading, but does the board want to see additional details on this before we have a discussion? I'm not seeing anyone. I know we're all very excited that this is moving forward from the, the direction that we gave to staff to work on these phases of workforce and affordable housing opportunities in the county. So with that, looking to any other board members, if there's comments or questions? Not seeing any. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment?
There is. We have Scott Finley signed in.
Great.
And Mr. Finley, distributed documents.
Please enter my comment in this document into the record pursuant to NRS 241. My name is Scott Finley. I am a resident of Washoe County and have a military background in the United States Air Force. The Board of County Commissioners must reject changes to the Washoe County Development Code that seek to implement the state's new minimum standard that would enable tiny mobile homes. In 2023, Senate Bill 40 was passed allowing the minimum square footage of manufactured housing to be changed from 1,200 square feet to 400 square feet. This is not a mandatory requirement made by... This is not a mandatory requirement made by the state of Nevada, but merely a suggestion. A tiny home is not a starter home. Only a slave could be persuaded by and appreciate such generosity. What our generation needs are family homes, not tiny mobile homes. How do you raise a family in a four-hundred-square-foot pseudo-home? The average size of a family home in the United States is more than two-thousand square feet. As Senate Bill 40 only suggests changing the minimum square footage of manufactured housing to four-hundred square feet, I would like to make an alternate suggestion that takes a sane approach that goes on the economic offensive. Instead, increase the minimum square footage of manufactured housing from twelve-hundred square feet to two-thousand square feet until Washoe County reaches a total fertility rate of 2.1 to achieve replacement levels and social equilibrium. Unlimited construction cannot create affordable housing when there is unlimited population displacement. All the growth that Washoe County is experiencing isn't from the native population replacing itself. It is from outsiders with no vested interest in the community, which subversives are in turn using as pawns to overwhelm and displace us for social and political purposes. This is the stated goal of multinational investment companies like BlackRock when they talk about forcing behaviors. Allowing tiny mobile homes will have an enormous economic impact, for the worse, by greenlining mobile home manufacturers to begin ramping up production. Mobile home manufacturers will start churning out four-hundred-square-foot mobile homes in a mad rush to make as much money in the shortest amount of time as possible with an, with an absolute complete disregard for our county and its community. These tiny mobile homes will have numerous defects, such as leaky roofs and much more. For these reasons, the Board of County Commissioners must reject changes to the Washoe County Development Code that seek to implement the state's new minimum standard that would enable tiny mobile homes. Advocating for tiny mobile homes under the guise of affordable housing does nothing to fix the core problem, which in actuality are failed economic policies and social decay. We need quality, not quantity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Pat Davison?
Hello again, Chair Hill, members of the commission. My name is Pat Davison. I live at thirty-five Clydesdale at the far north end of Red Rock. There's plenty of evidence that we have a shortage of affordable housing in our area, and we know our population will grow, increasing the competition for available housing until we can catch up on supply. We need to match that overwhelming shortage with a full toolbox of actions and solutions. You are taking action today in a real and tangible way to add more tools to the toolbox. Hooray! Something to cheer about, good news when a lot of housing news is depressing, something we can all share with the world. But in a more intangible way, you are giving hope to all those who are directly or indirectly affected by this shortage now. And that is also a good thing. Please support these amendments today so staff can start explaining and promoting these changes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With that, we'll close public comment and go back to the board. And I am looking for any additional comments or questions from the board or a motion to adopt ordinance, or not adopt ordinance, seventeen fourteen.
Madam Chair, I'll move to adopt ordinance number seventeen fourteen, which is an ordinance amending Washoe County Code, Chapter 110, by modifying various sections in Division III Regulation of Uses and Division IV Development Standards in order to update regulations related to accessory dwelling units, detached accessory structures, manufactured housing and battery charged fences and all matters necessarily connected therewith and pertaining thereto and to affirm the four findings of fact that the Washoe County Planning Commission made on January 2nd, 2024, as recorded with Resolution Number 24-05 and attached to this staff report for this item.
Thank you. Looking for a second? Commissioner Garcia?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any questions on that? Yes, Vice Chair Herman?
I, I have a few questions here that have just been circling. So, I didn't get all the details on this, I regret to say. But I, I just need to know a little bit more about where these can be done. Do they have to be on sewer? A few things like that. So, like, are these okay in a rural area that has, is on septic? Do you have to have two septics? And, and how, how does this work? Because there's, there's a lot of pieces to this thing. And I just wanted to hear a little bit more for some of the people because I'm asking for other people that have questioned me. So, can you do that for us?
Absolutely. Cat Oakley, Washoe County Planning. I'm speaking of my understanding of the Wash, the Nevada, Northern Nevada Public Health District's rules. They regulate septic. But we've had many discussions with them, and it is generally the case that you need two acres to have a, an ADU because it does require a second septic tank. And that is in areas that are not served by sewer. If they are served by sewer, then there is that ability to connect, which is where the possibility for an ADU comes in for those smaller lots. But that's generally how septic is regulated.
So, it's the lot size that will determine, determine whether you can have a second septic?
That is correct.
Sometimes it's hard to find one spot that'll work. So... Okay, so, and then there was something about sewer that some folks were telling me that if you were on a sewer, it was okay to have one? I mean, not have to add a second sewer hookup, or?
Again, it's, it's my understanding, and I'm not the expert in this, that there would not need to be a second direct connection to the main sewer line, but rather a branch off of the line that comes into the lot to serve that second dwelling unit.
But there aren't too many places that are big enough on sewers.
We have seen a number of ADUs come in already that are on those smaller lots, even a third acre. So, I'm, I don't know the details of how, how it happens, but I know that it has.
So, how do you feel this is going to be? Is it going to be hard to do this, or is it going to be easy?
I think the, the main benefit of these changes is that what's being removed is a potential barrier to people pursuing an ADU, which is the discretionary permit required by planning. We aren't making any changes to sewer regulations or septic regulations, but we, what we are doing is improving our portion of the process to make it more efficient for homeowners and for the planning department.
And this is entirely in the county?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Herman. Any other questions or comments by board members? I'm not seeing any. We have a motion by Commissioner Andriola and a second by Commissioner Garcia. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And that motion passes unanimously. We have a closed session that we will do after our public comment and commissioner and county manager announcements. So, that will be upstairs, and we, we will take public comment on that if folks want to do that. So, we will now move to item twenty-four. Mr. Manager?
Item, excuse me, item twenty-four is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. Commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
First up, we have Penny Brock, followed by Nicholas St. John.
Penny Brock, we heard Commissioner Clark in his earlier comments talk about the ROV office and problems with trust. Well, I requested a copy of contracts for the Dominion for Run Back, the temporary agency in Las Vegas that's going to send up election workers to work our elections. And also Strategy Rose. Well, what happened with Strategy Rose? That was like in January, I requested that. That was sent to the DA's, DA's office. I don't understand why. So, I am requesting a copy of the Strategy Rose contract for 2024. Again, the Washoe 311, they did send me something that was supposed to be the other contracts, but they were incomplete, et cetera, et cetera. So, now they're telling me it's going to take like a long time because they have to pull them from different sources. My understanding is we have a purchasing department that has all the contracts. So, I don't understand what the problem is with sending the voters and taxpayers copies of contracts that we're paying for. So, I would appreciate if you could ask 311 to please expedite sending me those requested contracts. Also, with the Dominion contract, as I explained earlier, this is going before the Supreme Court. Along with that is an injunction that it would stop the use of the electronic voting systems, which would mean Dominion. So, we will have to see if the Supreme Court honors that. If they do, it will be immediately. So, as I mentioned in another meeting, is maybe our ROV office should get ready for voting by paper ballots and hand counting. The cause of America under Mike Lindell's organization already has this figured out for us. The model for us to use is what we're calling the Missouri Model. They have trainings by internet, et cetera, et cetera. So, this will be very easy for us to implement hand counting. And then Commissioner Clark asked that this issue be put on the ballot or on the agenda for you to consider us voting this way. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Nicholas St. John, followed by Candy Green.
Nicholas St. John, for the record. I'm going to read this, and then I'll put it under here. It's the official oath. You'll probably recognize this one, Alexis, it's yours. "I, Alexis Hill, do solemnly swear and that I will support, protect, and defend the Constitution and government of the United States and the, and the Constitution and government of the State of Nevada against all enemies, whether domestic or foreign, and that I will bear true faith, allegiance, and loyalty to the same, any ordinance, resolution, or law of any state notwithstanding, and that I will well and faithfully perform all the duties of the office of Washoe County Commissioner, District One, on which I am about to enter. So help me God, under the pains and penalty of perjury." The reason I bring that up is because last Wednesday at eleven o'clock, I dropped off a packet for each one of you. In that packet is an acceptance or an, you know, an acceptance for your oath, which then becomes a binding contract. So, the binding contract means that once we, once that testing period of ten days is up, it becomes a binding contract in commerce. Any violation of the constitutions then turns that into a breach of contract. So, I wanted to make sure today that we get that on record as being, having been delivered. You guys have that. I explained to them that it was a time-sensitive matter and that if they did not have it, just putting it in your box and then waiting two weeks and coming back and saying we didn't get it, not appropriate. So, all of you should have gotten that. I'm not going to discuss it at this time. But if, but obviously you have that, and you have ten days to rebut this document. Next, in looking at the oaths for our, our second judicial district court, I have done extensive research, which is exhaustive. We went to the clerk's, county clerk's office and had them look up to see if they could find the oaths of office, the official oaths, for any of the sixteen judicial district court judges. They could not find any. We went to the recorder's office. They did a search. They could not find any. We were instructed that they take them and send them to the Secretary of State's office. So, I did a FOIA request to the Secretary of State's office, and they responded, "They do not possess them." I don't know how, if you understand the significance of this. We have sixteen second judicial district court judges who have no official oath of office on record anywhere. If they exist, someone needs to produce them, but they need to get filed with the recorder's office. So, anyway, I have that document as well, and I just delivered it to the governor, the lieutenant governor, and the attorney general.
Candy Green, followed by Scott Finley.
Hi, my name's Candy Green, and my name was used here today. And I've been in the back returning comments to media saying what my comment would be about what was commented about me. What I'm here for is to the chair. You and your husband are always lovely. You drive by our house. We live, what, four blocks from one another? And you always wave to my mother, and you are always kind. To the chair, to the commissioner. I have a ninety-eight-year-old mom. My house probably looks like yours. It has a ring on every corner. I have so much security on it. She wears a little badge around so that she, and it isn't because she's going to fall over anything because I have so many people at my house harassing me. I think you and I should have coffee because I think we're living the same life. There's many sides to all of this. But what has happened here today, I'm really saddened by because I also am called out all the time at the city of Reno, to the point I don't even bother to go to the meetings anymore because it just harasses the people that are there for basically business. I have a business. It's what I do. I made the mistake once of helping a friend with a logo and a tagline. And because of that, I have been monickered as being something I'm not. And so, I just wanted to go on the record with that. Thank you.
Scott Finley, followed by Janet Butcher.
Please enter my comment in this document into the record pursuant to NRS 241. My name is Scott Finley. I am a resident of Washoe County and have a military background in the United States Air Force. The individuals and entities pushing the Truckee Meadows Public Lands Management Act masquerade with the veneer of environmentalism. The Board of County Commissioners must pass out a resolution making a formal declaration condemning those that seek to bring forth the challenge to steal our land, our heritage. How does this Lands Grab Act protect Washoe County's environment when it seeks to take public lands that we already enjoy and then slice and dice it for private, public land developer, or private land developers? My wife and I live within a one-minute walk from BLM land. Our property being within such close proximity to public lands is one reason why we decided to move where we did. We take walks out there with our dogs, ride horses, and enjoy the nature of the high desert landscape in all its glory. Many people do. Nature is the original artist, and we enjoy its art. If the Lands Grab Act passes, the public land next to us will be turned over to private land developers who will in turn construct high-density apartment complexes. How does unlimited construction create affordable housing when there is unlimited population displacement? The simple fact of the matter is, if the only solution to enable an individual to live in an area is by destroying parts of the surrounding environment, then they are not wanted in Washoe County. When it comes to social stability, what we need is quality, not quantity. This problem we face is a product of failed economic policies and social decay. Instead of evaluating where we went wrong, we continue to double down on failure in order to maintain a status quo that has proven to be unsustainable. You cannot have infinite growth in a finite system. If people think that the passage of the Lands Grab Act will be a one-and-done deal, you are wrong. It will set precedents and greenlight that all of Nevada's public lands are up for grabs, and eventually even more public land will be handed over to private land developers. Given enough time, there won't be any public lands left in Washoe County for our grandchildren or our grandchildren's grandchildren's to enjoy. The Truckee Meadows Public Lands Management Act is Senator Jackie Rosen's brainchild. Jackie Rosen's allegiance to private land developers and her disgust for nature couldn't be any more obvious. The only greenery Jackie Rosen loves is what fits in her wallet. For these reasons, the Board of County Commissioners must pass a resolution making a formal declaration condemning those that seek to bring forth the challenge to steal our land, our heritage. Keep Nevada's public lands public. Thank you.
Janet Butcher?
Janet Butcher, for the record, please enter my comments verbatim into the minutes. Yeah, to piggyback off of Mr. Finley, the Lands Bill comments are not transparent. They're hidden. Want to know why? We know why. Because they don't want anybody to see who is against this and why, the real reasons. But I really want to talk about what happened today with the library trustee. We now have probably four people on the library trustee board that are from one district only. There were 28 applicants from District Four and District Five, but yet we chose someone again from District One. And I do want to conclude, though, that thank you for showing us that paper ballots and hand counts work. The only thing missing was that there was no voter ID asked for. Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will now move to Item 25, Commissioner and County Manager announcements. Mr. Manager?
Item 25 is Commissioners and County Managers' announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commissions, updates, requests for information, and topics for future agendas.
Do you have anything for us, Mr. Manager?
I do. I forgot to mention earlier, I didn't bring my notes, that I'm going to share with each of the Commissioners a copy of some information I received from Ryan Guffsterson, our Director of Human Services Agency. There have been some complaints recently about the quality and the flavor of the food in the senior centers. This information that he shares shows that there are guidelines and restrictions on nutritional content. So, the food that we serve is lower in salt, sugar, and saturated fats. Those are flavor drivers, and so they do that for the long-term health of the senior population they're serving. The meals are funded through the State Department of Disability Services, which enforces and tests to make sure we're in compliance with those rules. So, I just want to explain that the food there is going to taste differently than it does at Catholic Charities or any place else you may go. I'll share it with each of the board members, and if you have questions, you can let me or Ryan know.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Vice Chair Herman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Save this for last. Now that we can't seem to come up with any other reasons why we can't vote on the election bill that we produced, we need it on the agenda. It just needs to be fairly judged, like everything else. We've got to give it a chance, and I think it's only fair that we serve the people correctly and allow our election not to have doubts, but to be fairly judged and not any prejudice or anything like that. We need to have an honest, true election, and we need to give it a chance here, or we were going to disappoint a lot of people. So, please, I recommend that we just get it on the next agenda and vote on it and go one way or the other. It's the only fair thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've got a couple of questions for Mr. Edwards. Just so I understand open meeting law correctly, if one Commissioner talks about something and the other Commissioners don't respond or answer, there's no violation of open law meeting protocol, is there?
It's more complicated than that, but generally, I think that's correct.
So, if one Commissioner talks about something and one other Commissioner says something in a similar vein, they still haven't broken open meeting law yet until a third Commissioner might chime in or opine on something?
The facts of a specific situation would dictate the analysis, but generally, yes, I would say that that is correct.
So, the first person who talks about something, and the second person who might talk about, the third person that talks about the same thing, would that person be in violation, or would all three of us be in violation?
It'd be a violation by the board itself. That's how I would see that.
Okay, just wanted to get that on the record. Okay, and next, I would like to make a comment to Manager Brown and Ryan Guffsterson. You know, I don't even know where to start without being disrespectful, so I'm not going to be disrespectful, but to cloak the quality, the flavor, the look, anything to do with the food that we have here by some kind of regulation is so disingenuous, it's disgusting. You know, Washoe County has the same regulations that I'm sure Douglas County has as far as seniors, as far as Carson City has, as far as seniors being served. We have some 45%, I understand from memory, about 45% of the folks at the CARES campus, and they're getting food served by Catholic charities. So, this whole thing of we're serving crappy food because the government tells us we have to serve crappy food doesn't fly with me. This is outrageous. All you have to do with your own eyes, your own taste buds, is to go to Catholic charities and see what they serve. You go down to Douglas County and you see what they serve, and you look at Carson City and you see what they serve, and it looks better and it tastes better. As far as the chemical analysis of what might be in our food versus theirs, to hide behind that is just blah, 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 you know? Just BS after smoke, after smoke rings, you know? It's horrible, and I challenge everybody on this dais to get in the car, go carpool if you want, go to surrounding communities and see with your own eyes, they're doing a better job. So, don't give me the chemical analysis and the constraints and the salts and whatever else is in the food. We're not serving the same quality of food. We can do better. And if you think we can't do better, then I guess you're right, because I think we can do better. So, don't get up here and get this in the public record, because I'm going to come right back at you. I've been to all of these places, and it's horrible, and it looks bad, and we could do better, and always try and do better. It's always the right time to do something better. That being said, I'd like to, after meeting with the Secretary of State and the DA, and last Friday, I'd like to ask for an agenda item to be put on the agenda. We're waiting for the package to show up from the Secretary of State to outline the way they do voting in Nye County, and I want to see if this county can emulate the way they're doing voting and tracking and testing and sampling ballots and checking the integrity of the election, and I'd like to see that put on the agenda, please. I asked for it at the start of the meeting, and I'm asking for it again, and if it's good enough for these other counties, I understand that Elko's leaning that way, we'll know that soon enough, but I'm asking for it to be on, and I don't say it has to be implemented here. I'm just asking for it to be on the agenda, and we'll vote on it. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. DA Edwards, you're signed in?
Yeah, I just want to clarify with the Commissioner. When he mentioned the meeting with the Secretary of State last week, that was with representatives of the Secretary of State's office, not the actual Secretary of State, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Any other board member comments? I'm not seeing any. Thank you for a wonderful meeting. We will now adjourn to our closed session upstairs. Thank you.